Ready, Commissioners?
Yes.
Good morning, everyone, and welcome to the Taos County Board of Commissioners regular meeting for today, January 21st, 9:00 AM. Madam Clerk, if we can do the roll call.
Commissioner?
Yes, present.
Mr. Chairman?
Present.
Commissioner Norman?
Present.
Commissioner?
Present.
Okay. Thank you very much. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Rick Chavez to lead us with the Pledge of Allegiance.
(Inaudible) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Chavez. We'll move on, Commissioners, to the approval of the agenda. Changes from staff?
Chairman, I would like to add, under the Commissioners' report, the possibility of a joint meeting with the, you know, in the past, the Association of Counties held a kind of a group of, you know, of stakeholders, I would say, from Colorado and New Mexico because of the grazing, hunting, and pilt, you know, along the northern boundary. And then just for, you know, a brief, a brief that we can maybe get those entities together just to discuss, you know, because we kind of intermingle with each other, the Colorado line and the New Mexico line, I'd just like to, you know, have a little handout and just go over that. I think it would be, I know Commissioner Sanchez's area, and I think, you know, bringing people together to talk about those issues, you know, pilt, E-911, oil and gas, mineral extraction, grazing, hunting, wildfires, and the drought that might, we might be hitting, so.
Okay, and this will be under?
Commissioners' report.
Okay, Commissioners' report, it's okay. Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Let's see, I wonder if, under County Manager's report, we can get some kind of an update on any responses we've gotten from, to our offers for potential partners on E-911?
Okay.
Yes, we can.
Thank you. And that question for DFA about gross receipts tax in Cuesta as a result of some of the cleanup that's begun up there, I don't know if you've gotten any information from your trips to Santa Fe on that, but an update would be good.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, we don't have an update on that right now. We are meeting with them this week while we're down in Santa Fe, and so we should have one for the next Commission meeting for you.
Okay, great, scratch that. And then, under Commissioners' report, I'd just like to give a brief description of the Regional Coalition meeting that we had here on Friday, last Friday, the Regional Lano Coalition.
Okay.
Chairman?
Thank you.
The Chairman, Commissioners, also, on Commissioners' report, I would like to elaborate what Commissioner Barone just brought up with being good neighbors with Colorado, New Mexico, so I've got something to add to that also.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, also, if we can do an amendment to the agenda, item 11A, Financial Audit, would it be possible to move that up? The auditor has had some scheduling conflicts and is requesting that possibly we move it up to item 8, right after 8A in the first page on the bottom? If we could move that to that section, just so that we can get him out of here before 12. He has some other commitments down south and needs to travel down there, if that's possible, or if the Commission would allow that.
This is a financial report or audit report?
That's correct. It's under Budget Matters, 11A.
Okay.
If we could move that again to 8A, or right after 8A, so it'd be 8B, actually.
Very good. Any other changes? If not, do I hear a motion for approval of the agenda as amended?
A motion.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes. Should be ready for the man.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you. We'll move on, then, to?
Mr. Chairman, I'm sorry to interrupt. The attorney and myself were just looking at it. There's not a heading for Commissioners' reports, so that would have to be item 11, right before the County Manager's report. Because there wasn't anything on there, the computer must have dropped that item, so just for clarification purposes for the agenda.
Do we need to do a motion to make that amendment?
Yes.
Motion is made by Commissioner Dudon. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes, okay. Thank you very much. We'll move on, then, to item 5. This is Citizens' Concerns Discussions. I know that we have Mr. Brian Lewis in the audience. Would you like to come forward? Good morning, Mr. Lewis, and again, state your name for the record.
Brian J. Lewis. I'm a resident in Talpa, 13 Camino del Caballo. Day before yesterday, my wife, who works down here in the John Dunn Street Shops at Step Me Out, she went into work at just before 2:00 PM and was parking in the free parking lot across from the paid parking lot across Placitas. And as she was walking from the parking lot, there was a young man, late teens, early twenties, sitting on the curb of the parking lot, and as my wife walked by, he opened up his jacket and he was masturbating in front of her. And my wife freaked out. She's had, unfortunately, had an incident with that earlier in her life and reacted in fear and panic and ran across the street to the kiosk at the, in the paid parking lot, the Taos Police Department kiosk. No one was there, so from there she ran to her work, called 911. Dispatch said that they would send a car out, but they didn't take her phone number, nor did they take, nor did they ask her if she wanted a police officer to come take a report, and that was the end of that. I didn't find out about it until that evening, and I called dispatch to find out what had happened. They told me that they had sent a car out, and that was it. So I asked if I could speak to Sergeant at the Desk or an officer on duty. I was told that there was no officers on duty, they were all out the field. So I then, I asked her, I said, "Can you explain to me exactly what happened?" And she said, "Well, we had numerous reports on this." And I said, "But, okay, that's terrific, but I'm concerned that you didn't call my wife back to let her know what happened, nor was, nor did an officer contact her." And the dispatch person told me, or I should say, the employee, told me that my wife did not ask for a call back or for an officer to contact her. Now, in my opinion, that's their job, to keep a cool head and to let that person know what they, what they need to do, what they can do, or even tell them what they need to do. I mean, I would look at it in the same light as if someone called in and said, "There's a fire in my house, I'm stuck in my bedroom." You know, because you're in a panic mode, you're not thinking, you're frightened, you're not thinking, that wasn't done. And I explained that to them, "I think that's your job, and you should do it." From there, I went and I called, I called the following day, which was yesterday morning, I called the Police Department Chief's Direct Line and left a message. I then called dispatch back and asked if I could, asked if I could speak to an officer on duty, and they said, "No, there's only three on duty, they're all out in the field," which, to me, scares me a little bit as far as public safety, because if you walk into the police station and there's no, on Civic Plaza Dr., not Civic Plaza Drive, or is it Civic, yes, Civic Plaza Drive, if you walk in the police station, there's no officers on duty? That doesn't make sense to me, first of all, from a public safety point of view. I did end up eventually getting a call back from the police chief and, who told me he was chewing nails and he was ready to, excuse my language, but kick some butt. And he ended up getting a sergeant out to take a report from my wife. He said that they were going to deal with the dispatch issue. I also called Gabriel, who's my county commissioner, and told him about the situation. And I also called Mayor Dan Barone, or, excuse me, I have a little jump in the gun there, aren't I? I called Mayor Darren Cordova and explained to him the situation. And I did receive a telephone message later on in the afternoon that he was already on top of it. Well, I, you know, as far as I was concerned, I was already on top of it anyhow. But I am concerned that our 911 dispatch here is not trained properly and is not, and then our police officers, first of all, this is, I didn't mention this, four, I was, I found out from the chief that four police officers went out to the site, they confronted the young man, they were there 15 minutes, they didn't arrest him, they said they didn't see him, they basically said they opened up his jacket and his pants were up. Well, I'm sorry, you know, the witness was my wife, and they didn't even go talk to her, so my concern is that there's a sexual deviant out there. This is also right next to the elementary school and right next to the church. Could have been on a weekday, you know, I mean, a lot of things could have happened there, and I'm surmising and supposing, but, you know, my concern is, is that my wife's safety wasn't taken into consideration, and I think that's an issue with our 911 system. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, we've also followed up on that, the Chairman also called me over the weekend. Chief Weaver was contacted. My concern is that there wasn't names drawn. The report was very sketchy, apparently, it was done after the fact, not all the proper data was gathered, and the other concern that I have is, is this individual still out there? Is he hanging around that area day by day? You know, his name and those kind of things really need to be taken into. So we'll work with the Town of Taos on that to try to see what we can do to help in that aspect, and with our Sheriff's Department also.
Chairman? Mr. Archuleta, I did have the opportunity to be in a meeting, the, I guess, the merchants from the downtown area had, has continually to ask for a request for an officer for the downtown area. In the meeting, I guess, there's still short officers, about four or five officers, to completely fill up the, I guess, the group that they need to. But one of the things that was brought to us a couple of years ago, and one of the things that the merchants were complaining about is, there's a lot of people that hang out in that area, and there's a lot of people urinating in flower beds and doing other things in flower beds there. And at one time, there was a resolution or some sort of, I don't know if it was a resolution or a JPA for possibility of cameras on the old county courthouse to help in that endeavor, I don't know, because a lot of times, there's reports filed, and windows broken, and people reaching in and grabbing jewelry and stuff, but nobody can figure out who's doing it, and I don't know if those cameras would help. I would, it would seem to, I know that recently, we were able to catch one of our burglaries at Old Geens, and, you know, they had stole the truck and one of our wood splitters, and then they came back for a number of other items, and they were able to prosecute them based on that evidence. So I don't know if this is something that is still in the works, or it was a proposal a few years ago, and I don't know if it never got followed through with, or if we can help in any way to move this forward.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Barone, I'm not aware of that, but we, I will look into it and make sure I get back to the Commission on that.
Mr. Chairman, I mean, Commissioners, on top of that, I was wondering if today, Mr. Archuleta, you could possibly place a phone call to the Town of Taos Police Chief and ask them as to what exactly they are doing at this point. Schools started again today in the public schools, and I know that the Our Lady of Guadalupe Church also has catechism classes there in the evenings, and so this individual does pose a serious situation for the merchants and people who work in the downtown area, but also our young students, our young people. And so it would be good if, I know that they're shorthanded, but I think that it's very important that they post someone in that area to make sure that the area is safe for people walking through the downtown parking lots and those areas there.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Chairman? Steve, the insufficient data, was that at dispatch or Town Police, or both?
Both. It really was more the police, because they're the ones that went out and reported to the incident, but they really, as the individual stated, you know, didn't really interview the witnesses prior to. They did see the individual, apparently, he did have his pants up at the time, but again, didn't take names, you know, identifying information, any of those things. And then, the other thing is that they need to watch to see if he's still in the area, if he's still sitting around, lingering within that area of what's going on, and so those are the things that we've asked for.
Thank you.
What I understood from, what I understood from the police chief is that dispatch did not take my wife's number, they did not ask for a report or a police officer to go out and take a report from her. I also understand from the police chief that the, and I believe there was four officers, is what I was told, that went to the site where this young man was, they did not even log that they were there, that they were there 15 minutes, they did not write down any information at all, other than that they were there at the location. So, to me, that's an issue of public safety, and I think it needs to be addressed. Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, you know, to me, this just is another reminder of the importance of training and supervision of dispatch, and it's an issue that's been there for quite a while.
Thank you, Commissioner Blankenhorn. Anyone else, under Citizens' Concerns? You can state your name for the record.
Barone, Honorable Commissioners, my name is Judah Botsir. I was featured this week in this week's Know Your Neighbor, a week that should have had some joy, was filled with terrible sadness. See, my best friend, the last eight years, is in some undisclosed place facing a very serious recovery. I'm sure all of you have read her abundance of wonderful articles appearing in the tempo in the last several years. Even though she's continually cried out for me, I've been unable to visit or communicate with her, try to make sense of that. I've met many skeptics who refuse to believe my account of the government's blatant interference in my life. Even if hit by a brick, I wonder if that would change. But I assure you, that not only is it true, but the one person that could have and would have vouched on my behalf is no longer capable of it. She would have done cartwheels and shook the rafters were something to happen to me, but it happened to her first. I'm here to let you know that it was no accident, but a very diabolical crime. I'm here to let you know that absolutely every element of our law enforcement in this town is no longer serving the people of this once quaint valley, but have compromised their own moral fiber to do the bidding of Uncle Sam. So, if you are the mother or father, son, daughter, brother, sister, lover or wife of somebody who wears the uniform that was meant to protect, ask them point blank, "Honey, have you ever been told to follow a red Jeep?" When they squirm in their answer, reply, "Honey, how would you feel if it was me?" So I ask this whole town and county to pray for Ariana Kramer and keep her dear to your hearts.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Good morning, and state your name for the record.
Good morning. My name's Shirley Fernandez, and I am the Library Director of Taos Public Library. I come to you as first, the Library Director, and then as your constituent. I have been, I was born and raised here in Taos, and I have been a lifelong member of the library community. As you know, we have been having some financial issues at the Taos Public Library, and I come to you to please consider putting money in your next fiscal year budget for the Taos Public Library. If you speak to your constituents, they already think you are giving us money. When we implemented an annual fee at the beginning of the fiscal year, many of our patrons stated, "But I already pay property taxes." Had to explain that property taxes do not fund the Taos Public Library. It was to their amazement that they don't. As I do research in my search for support for the Taos Public Library, libraries are not funded by the counties in New Mexico, they're funded by municipalities. Our municipality has been funding Taos Public Library, and to this day, as if you visit us, we have a wonderful library. It's large, accommodating, has over 72,000 volumes. Currently, we have about 40 periodicals, 18 computers, sorry, 17 computers that are available for public use. All this is available to all residents. The annual fee was rescinded in November, and we are in the process of refunding those annual fees. I ask all our constituents to please just consider it a donation, you know, it was $10, and a lot of them have done that. But we're still facing a stagnant budget, budgets that don't grow, don't allow us to grow. And the funding that we receive, it keeps us open, we're able to open the doors, I have limited staff to serve the public. But the funds that are available for databases, additional books, new and current issues of periodicals, all those are shrinking. And as the inflation continues to grow, the funds that are available will only cover utilities and staff salaries. Staff have not had a raise in over four years, and so I'm looking for additional funding for the library. We get some funding from our Friends of the Library Group, and we get some funding from the state. The GO bond that our Taos County constituents wholeheartedly support, we get that every other year. So the 2012 GO bond that was passed, funds are not available until the end of 2014. So those funds cannot be used for utilities and staff salaries. Those are used for, hopefully, update computers, or purchase some new books, or fund some special programming. At this time, I'd like to remind you that out of the 31,000 cards that have been issued at the Taos Public Library, they all come from your, from your constituents, because we're all county residents. Even the town residents are county residents. They're all your constituents. District 1 has close to 14,000 cards, District 2 has over 8,000 cards, 3 has over 500, District 4 has over 6,000 cards, and District 5 has over 500 cards. These are all people that I know already think that we're getting money from the county. And so I'd like you to remember that the library is an asset to our community, and not just for our residents, but also for our visitors. We get visitors from all over the country, from California to New York, to the UK, Canada, they all come in to Taos, and one of the places they stop and visit is the Taos Public Library. We're not just books, we're there for information, and we want to be able to provide that information. And we want to be able to provide current information, and for that, it takes money. It's difficult to make do with less, and it doesn't just hurt the library, but it hurts our residents. Not only do I want you to look at putting money in your next fiscal year budget for the library, but I'd like you to do some research about creating a special library district. That is something that New Mexico has not done before, but it's something that it's, I think it's time to look at. By providing a special library district, it would not just fund the Taos Public Library, but it would fund any other libraries that are starting to grow in our community. We have the Talpa Library and we have the Cuesta Library that are just starting. And every library that is out there provides information to our residents, and an informed constituency is one who will vote correctly. So with that, I want to thank you for your time and your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fernandez, I really appreciate the fact that you have come forward with this. Was wondering as to what the total annual budget is for the Town of Taos Library at this point?
At this point, we are at $560,000.
$560,000? And is that basically a bare bones budget? How much could you actually use on an annual basis?
That is a decrease from the last four years. Every year, we have decreased. In order to run sufficiently, I would think it would be closer to $700,000.
So you're saying that the budget was decreased in the last?
Every year, we have decreased it by a percentage. This last year, it was like 2%. We have a position that is vacant currently, that was not funded. I have a position that is funded, but it's part-time, and the positions stay in there, but if they're not funded, or if I can't fill them, then it's basically, I can't use that money for anything else but for that. So it's, it's money that we've had to cut from periodicals. At one point, we had 90 periodicals in the library, and we're down to 40. We've asked for adopt a magazine program, you know, our constituents have ordered the subscriptions so that we can continue to provide that information. Books have been cut, you know, the budget for books, and like I said, we do get money for that sort of thing from our Friends of the Library, and we can use our GO bond money and our state aid money for that. But money for staff has shrunk, and as you all know, inflation keeps growing, and it's harder and harder for residents to live in Taos. And if their salaries don't grow, then they've got to go looking for some other jobs somewhere else, and it's really hard. The one position that I have now that's funded, it's a part-time position, it's temporary, so there's not a lot of people that are interested in a temporary position, and so it's hard to fill those positions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Fernandez, Commissioner Barone, and then Commissioner Dudon, Sanchez, and Steve.
Thank you, Chairman. Ms. Fernandez, thank you for the tour. The other day, I did go down and take a tour, and Ms. Fernandez was, you know, took some time and walked me around and showed me the different, you know, groups. It was great to see a lot of the people in there using the internet. There was a, there was a children's center, and there was a girl as young as, I don't know, she was, she must have been?
Free.
It was great to see a lot of the people in there using the internet. There was a children's center, and there was a girl as young as, I don't know, she was, she must have been about eight months old. I don't know, maybe not that young. She was probably, I think she was two. I think she was two. And she was sitting there on the computer, actually, you know, very interactive.
We have an interactive computer for toddlers.
It was great to see. And Chairman, I just recommend that in this next fiscal year budget, that we might look to see if there's any possibilities. I don't know if there is, but the possibility, if there is possibility, I just look to you for your direction.
Thank you, Commissioner Barone. And I know at Christmas time that I had asked our county manager to look at that possibility of providing some extra funding, and I hope he's got some sort of an answer today. But before that, we'll listen to Commissioner Dudon and Sanchez.
Ms. Fernandez, I have a question. When you said the residence fee had been rescinded, is that the fee that they had imposed on county residents for $10?
Yes. That was rescinded in November, and any resident who is, who has the receipt, well, any resident who paid the fee can either get a credit or their money back, depending on if they have the receipt. As you all know, I have to provide a paper trail, so without a receipt, the best I can do is a credit on their account. And if you're wondering, well, how can they use a credit? We charge nominal 20 cents a day per item late fee, and we charge $3 replacement card for if they lose their card. So there's little fees that it can add up to $10, and so that would, eventually, they would get their money back.
And then you stated that your budget, I guess adds up today, is $560,000? Need like $700,000 to?
To run the library the way it should be, you know, fully staffed, get some professional training for my staff members. I have no monies right now, any training that they do. We'd look for free webinars, but I have basically no travel money for them to go and attend classes in Santa Fe, you know, at the State Library or anything like that. So a lot of them are doing it on their own time, out of their own pocket. And just to show you how devoted my staff is, you know, they train, they do their own training, they travel for, they're on their own dime. And I have a staff member that's been on staff over 20 years, and, you know, it's really hard. I feel bad when I can't give them the raise that they deserve, not just because they stick around, but because they know their stuff.
Thank you. Commissioner Sanchez.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Ms. Fernandez, I want to start off by just thanking so much and your staff. I know you work hard at this, and I agree with Commissioner Barone that we look into our budget and see what's out there to support you folks, because it's our youth and our constituents that you mentioned earlier. You know, my district is District Two. You just mentioned you had 8,000 cards out there. So we're looking, what, at 140,000 is what you're needing? I don't know how much of that we can help you with, but I'm in support of you. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you very much.
And I'm dismayed that there's only 300 cards from District Three, but perhaps maybe it's because of the Taupu Library.
Well, and it could be that I miscalculated. I'm not sure how. I was trying to use zip codes, and so that was a process in itself. So I could have my numbers wrong, but I mean, when you look at it, 31,000 cards, and they're all county residents, and it doesn't really make any difference which district they're The way I see it is, we're all hermanos, you know? We all live here. If I go somewhere and they ask me, where are you from? I'm from Taos.
Ms. Fernandez, before we move on to our county manager, the special library district, how would that work?
Well, and that's something that would have to happen new here in New Mexico. It's just, from the way the ordinances are written for New Mexico, counties would need to create a special library district to tax residents for libraries. So I'm not sure how it would be done. I know there's other states that are funded by counties. New Mexico is, has, like I said, has traditionally been funded by municipalities. We're kind of in an unusual spot, because Taos County is so spread out, and the only major library is Taos Public. And, I mean, we started out as a volunteer library years ago. I mean, I remember my grandfather lived across the street from the Harwood, and that's where I grew up. And so that's why I can say I've been a lifelong member of the library, because I started very young going to the library. But it's just, the way it, I'm not even sure how the town originally got involved to fund it, because it was originally run by volunteers, and I'm thinking it was like the Taupu Community Library. You know, it was, that's the way it was. And so...
So it's perhaps maybe a library tax that is assessed somehow?
It's assessed to property, and it would just go to libraries, and then it would be distributed depending on the size of the library.
And other states do it, you said?
Other states do it.
If maybe you could gather some of that information and share it with our county manager, that would be much appreciated. Mr. Archuleta?
I'll start looking into it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I just, Ms. Fernandez, first of all, thank you for coming here today, and yes, we are committed to helping even more above and beyond. But I do want to just set the record straight for the Commissioners and for the camera for today. What happens in property taxes around Taos County is that all those tax dollars come into Taos County, okay? And then we do a distribution of those tax dollars, and we don't pick and choose and say, well, only this much came from Cuesta, and only this much came from Piñasco, basically. We take the total amount of the tax dollars, and then we distribute that back to the schools, we distribute that back to Taos County, to the Town of Taos. Taos County gets their portions, and everybody else who's in this pie. So the reality of that county residents aren't paying for the library is not true. All the taxes that go together come in in a lump sum, and then those are redistributed out. Now, those are given to the Town of Taos, and however the Town of Taos wants to distribute that through their general fund is up to the Town of Taos. But every taxpayer in Taos County is paying for that library through a distribution that goes back into the Town of Taos. So I just want to be that real clear with that. The second thing is that with the grocery receipts tax, the majority of the businesses, Walmart, Smiths, Albertsons, all the big businesses, basically, that Taos County residents come and shop in, then those grocery receipts tax also go back to the Town of Taos for their general fund and for budgeting. And so for that purpose, it's up to the Town of Taos, basically, to distribute that fund however they want to distribute it. But again, Taos County residents are shopping at Walmart, are shopping at Smiths, are shopping at Albertsons, and so those grocery receipts tax that are specific to the municipality actually go back into the Town of Taos. And what we've seen here at Taos County is that our grocery receipt tax and our property taxes aren't going down. They're actually going up, which is a good thing. So if the town's not wanting to put more money into the library, those are decisions that their administration's actually making, it's not really because there's a loss of funds, because the funds are going up and are in there. I have been asked by the Commission to look at some grants for Taos County in order to help with that, and we will be looking at that. We've asked our lobbyist and our grant writer to look at that, to see if there's any funds, other funds that we can leverage to bring out there. We are also looking at our general fund to see if there's anything else that we can give above and beyond that. But I also want to be clear to the residents and the constituents of Taos County is that we also fund the Rural Bookmobile through UNM Taos. We also fund and help with the Taupu Community Center, and we also help with Cuesta. So we're trying to spread our funds as far as we can with all of those, but the decision of the grocery receipts tax, the property tax, all of that, I just want to be real clear, it comes into a bulk, it's distributed to the town, and then they make their budgets based on that. And so taxpayers are paying for that. All the residents of Taos County are paying for that. And our hope is that we can continue to support the library and move that a little bit further, and we will continue to do that in the future. And, Mr. Chairman, yes, you have asked for that. We will look at that. We had our mid-year budget review this year. We really have a little bit of savings, but again, we, you know, we have the $1.4 million that we're going to be putting into the E-911 Center, again, that benefits all residents from Taos County. And so because of that, we're not willing to move forward with any other new, say, projects that are out there, simply because we're holding that line to make sure that we can afford the $1.4 million that we're going to do with the 911 dispatch. If in June, once that's built and ready to go, we see that there's some more vacancy savings because of the property tax, because GRTs are coming in higher, then we will bring that back in front of the Commission to see if there's any more that we can put in there. I do want to caution the Commission, and this is an issue for me on some level, is that the Commission can choose to give an additional $30,000, $100,000 to the library, but once it leaves our office and it goes into the town coffers, it's up to the town as to where they're going to distribute that money to. We can only give that to their general fund, per se, and then from their general fund, it's up to them to distribute that over to the library. So I do want to caution the Commissioners on that, that that is an issue that we can't dictate to the town where they're going to put that. We can make the donation above and beyond if we'd like, but it's up to them to make sure that they budget it in there for the library specifically and not into any other projects that they have.
Thank you.
Did that make sense, Ms. Fernandez? Okay, thank you.
We will make every attempt, and I'm hoping, Mr. Archuleta, that after the budget review that has been performed, that there are some monies that could be used for your purpose.
Thank you. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Anyone else under citizens' concerns? Go ahead. Good morning.
Hi, Jeanne Green. I have to leave in five minutes, but I was wondering if the, I know on the agenda, your Area G resolution, I won't be here for that, but are you going to be allowing a public comment during that portion of the agenda?
Of course, yes.
Okay, good. Well, I just want to make my comment now before I have to go, and that is, the resolution has been brought before you, and it's been passed in Santa Fe. I know that Commissioner Blankenhorn is going to ask you to delay the vote on this issue, and this is a really important issue, the Area G resolution to stop to oppose the cap and cover, and ask for full characterization and exhumation of the wastes that are there that are legacy waste. We don't even know what's in there. Jay Coghlan did a presentation to the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities and showed places where there are plumes underneath all four zones, aquifer zones under Lantal, and that some of it has already gone down 200 feet. So the issue is regarding the aquifer, that we don't want our aquifer contaminated, and also being downwind. If there were an earthquake and fires over there, we would definitely get it, just as we've gotten the smoke from the last fires. So I'm asking you, there's an upcoming decision to be made by New Mexico Environment Department very soon, so I am hoping that you will go ahead and pass this resolution soon, today, instead of delaying it for a proposal that we haven't even seen. So that's my two cents.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else under public comment? Mr. Lewis, go ahead.
Hi, I'm Ellen Brodsky. I'm a longtime library employee. Now, I left in July, now I'm a volunteer at the Taos Public Library. And I just wanted to make a brief statement in support of Shirley's request, and also express my gratitude to you for your support for the library. I, of course, I'm also a county resident and a library user. I feel strongly that the library is more than an amenity, but also an investment in our community. And I've seen firsthand how important it is to our kids for their education, and also the digital literacy aspect of it. We have people that, some of our older residents that rely on the library staff to use the computer. Also, we have a lot of people in our community that don't have access to high-speed internet, and they rely on the library for that, or they don't have a computer. And there are business people, artists who come in for business materials and so on and so forth, and the staff is really stretched. They won't complain to you, but I can see firsthand when I go in how stretched they are, that there's no time to do some of our more traditional activities like our summer lecture series, our ebook classes for those people who don't know how to use ebook readers, and so on. And recently, I was working, well, actually, it's an ongoing project for me. I've been working in the reference room, and I came across a set of encyclopedias that are about 12 years old. And I'm, you know, I'm not sure there's money to replace those. And if you think about our kids using a set of encyclopedias back when, you know, another president was in office, and all those things that have happened since about 2001 or 2002, I just don't think that's a good thing for our community. So I really appreciate your considering, and I understand you have a lot of issues, but I really appreciate your considering further support for this, what I think is a jewel and an investment. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Brodsky.
And Chairman, you know, literacy is so important in our community. Literacy, literacy, literacy.
Thank you, Commissioner.
And, Mr. Chairman, I agree with Ellen. It is a jewel, and, you know, we have to make sure as a community that we are able to maintain a public library.
Thank you, Commissioner. Mr. Lewis?
Yes, I have two statements to make. One is something for you, Gabriel, because you're my district commissioner. We have an issue, and I've talked to you about this before, with speeders on our road, which is a kind of a thoroughfare between Espinosa and El Tros. We have a 20 mile an hour speed limit, which is, nobody observes it. And being that I live on the wrong side of the road, meaning that I get the wind blowing everything coming off the road onto my property, and I'm not blaming Sheriff's Department, because obviously, they've got a wide area to police, but if there's any way we can address doing some type of speed deterrent on our street, because as I told you before, we have people driving up and down our street doing 70 miles an hour. You know, we have residents that walk on the street with their children, they walk every morning, and this happens from, you know, dawn to dusk, and sometimes beyond. I know you've asked me before to actually videotape it so I could present that information, but it hasn't been something I can do. Wanted to find out if it was possible to get together with you and the county road department to see if we could address that issue. So that's something just for my neighborhood. My second issue is the solid, the Taos County Solid Waste Card that we all have to purchase if we live in the county. And I'm not against it, but at the same time, I don't use it. And I've owned my home here now for 14 years in the county, and I pay for waste management services. You know, I'd like to see if there is any possibility of my being able to waive that, having to pay that $25, because it is, I have to pay it, otherwise I could have a lien on my property. If, I don't know if doing that on a case-by-case basis makes sense, or is even, you know, economically feasible, but I would like to see us go back to the pay-as-you-go at both the waste stations and the, out at the dump. And therefore, take those funds, I would rather see that $25, go to the library. I'd rather be, you know, beholden to that than having to pay for something that I never use, and then I pay for another service to pick up my trash. So that's something I wanted to bring up, and I would hope the county commissions would address that issue.
Do you recycle items at all?
I recycle everything.
Do you ever take them to the transfer stations or the landfill?
The recycling? No, I take it to the town. I didn't know that the county has recycling. I can take it there, that's fine. Thank you.
Mr. Archuleta?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, well, I'll look into that. It's my understanding if they can prove that they're with solid waste, that, that, no?
No.
Okay, I'll review that. I wasn't aware of that. It was my understanding, as long as you have a suitable trash pickup, that you wouldn't have to pay that $25 fee. So we'll look at that, Mr. Lewis, and get back with you. Thank you.
Okay. Judah?
I thought that's the way it was, too.
Obviously, my, the issues I keep bringing up are a personal concern and not just a county concern, even though it is related to absolutely everybody here, if what's county concern, even though it is related to absolutely everybody here, if what's going on to me can be proved, which I have, uh, a long accounting of what's been going on with me. So I, please ask you to, uh, take my situation very seriously and talk amongst yourselves, have your own private session, and, uh, please find room to meet with me in private so I can share with you the, um, so I can share with you in more detail what's actually been happening, happening to me for the last several years. Thank you.
Thank you, Judah. Okay, anyone else? If not, we'll, um, move on then to, uh, item six. This is Minutes, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions regarding the following, and these are the, uh, set of minutes from December 17th of 2013, and this was a regular commission meeting. Commissioners? Is there a motion for?
Someone to approve?
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk.
Yes.
President Chairman.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Commissioner.
Yes.
Chairman.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on then to, uh, item seven. This is Presentations, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A is Presentation of Certificates to Mr. Snyder Sloan, Jim Vaughn, Frank Gallegos, Donald Gallegos, and Mr. Malakias Rayel, Mr. Sanchez.
Pass the commission to come down.
Okay.
Chairman, Board of Commissioners, if I could, I'll, I'll give a little bit of, uh, story leading up to this. Um, on that week of, uh, of the 19th of December, we were having some issues with one of our repeater sites, namely, the link that kind of goes between Flag and San Antonio Mountain, and due to that, um, we had put in a service call to have Advanced Communications come up and, and do some repair work. On Friday, the 20th, I got a call from Advanced Communications that they were not able to access, um, the Flag repeater site due to the amount of snow that was up on the mountain, and they were going to make an attempt to come up on, uh, Monday. Snyder Sloan gave me a call. I kind of explained the situation because that kind of affects some of their communications with Quest as well, and I got a call from them later that evening that they were going to make the attempt to go up to Flag and, uh, change out the radio that needed, um, to be looked at. So they took it upon themselves, and I, I discussed it with them, and Jim Vaughn and Snyder Sloan started making their way up the mountain about eight o'clock that night. Um, and then we actually had some snow in the area as well. Later on, they actually had gotten stuck in the ATV that they were on and couldn't go any further, and I talked, I spoke to the county manager, and, um, they spoke also with, um, Donald Gallegos, uh, who said that he would take his snowmobiles out there. Um, they met with, um, Jim Vaughn and Snyder Sloan. They actually were able to make it to the site. They were able to change that radio out, and that took place at about, uh, one o'clock in the morning, when I, I received a call from Snyder Sloan saying that was done, and told him, I go, "Okay, you guys are coming off the mountain, give me a call when you guys get off the mountain." And I got a call from them. It was about 4:30, 5:00 o'clock that morning, telling me that they were all off the mountain and they were all safe. So I would like to recognize, um, those individuals with a certificate for taking upon themselves in a time that we needed to have that communications, uh, link back up, not only for the weekend, but with the upcoming Christmas holiday. And the certificate that they're going to be presented, it's a certificate of appreciation. The certificate is presented to, and it goes to all the individuals. This one's for Frank Gallegos for assisting Taos County in getting Flag Mountain up and
This is solar carpet structure, uh, carport structure, I'm sorry, for east parking lot
running during a critical time. So I'd like to recognize Frank Gallegos, Snyder Sloan, Jim Vaughn, uh, Donald Cordova,
on Albright Street. We do have, uh, our county manager has, who has been working with, uh, Mr. Mark Johnson
and Malakias Rayel for assisting the county, and Donald Gallegos also, as well, for assisting
and Sol Luna Solar, uh, Justin Smith, Shelter Incorporated.
the county in, uh, taking care of this situation for us and getting our communications back
Good morning, welcome.
Good morning, uh, Mr. Archuleta, and thank you, Commissioners, for, uh, taking the
up.
time to, to, uh, look at a presentation that we have today. I was wondering if I could, uh, could I take this down and, and work on my PowerPoint right here?
Um, we're going to give a, uh, about a 15-minute presentation on, uh, the feasibility of a solar PV system for the county administration building. Um, we'll take a look at the benefits of, of two scenarios, uh, one being a solar parking canopy on the east side of the building. It's about 213 kilowatts is the amount of power that would fit there, and a solar rooftop array. Um, some of the goals, I think, for the county that, I think it's really notable that the county is considering a solar, uh, project, uh, striving to a more carbon-neutral energy of system here, and especially being good stewards of public funds and, and saving taxpayer dollars. It's not often that a public project is considered that actually makes money for a public entity. Um, a solar carport array, this is a Google Earth picture of how it would look on the east parking lot. There would be three, uh, parking canopies that would cover the, uh, main parking areas. Um, this is kind of a look from the east elevation, or, or from the west, from the east, uh, looking to the west, and this picture shows the three canopies there, and, and then an architectural rendering below. And that's kind of how it would look, uh, looking north. Commissioners, do you all have that on your screens up there, obviously?
I, I thought it was built already.
Yeah, it looks pretty good.
It's amazing how well you can do this.
Yeah. Well, this computer's kind of slow now. It doesn't, uh, there we go. And there is a, uh, a footprint of what it would look like. The, the administration building uses about 445,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity per year. A solar carport, uh, like shown in those pictures, would make 327,000 kilowatt-hours a year, which represents about 74% of the county's usage of their electricity. There are a couple ways of looking at structuring, uh, an interconnection agreement with Kit Carson Electric Cooperative.
Excuse me. I have a question. Uh, go back a little bit. You said that county uses how many? Kilowatts a year?
445,000.
And with the three carports, it would come up to 327, or what?
Yeah, the three carports would make, uh, 327,000 kilowatt-hours of electricity, and that would provide, for the administration building, it would provide 74% of the, of the consumption of just the administration building. That's not the whole county complex. So that's a very good question. Um, there are a couple of ways, uh, to look at structuring an agreement with Kit Carson Electric Cooperative. The first, uh, being that, uh, just a grid-tied net metering agreement whereby the county would be reimbursed about five cents per kilowatt-hour for, uh, each kilowatt hour, hour of electricity it makes. In this scenario, uh, in the, the first-year benefit would be about $15,000, and if you divide that by the system costs, uh, it's a cash-on-cash return on investment of about 2% per year. After, uh, in this scenario, it would take 30 years to, uh, recoup all of the money that a, a carport structure would cost. Um, and cumulative, cumulative electric sales in that scenario would be about $600,000 in a 24-year period. 24 years is more or less the, uh, life expectancy of a, uh, solar system. Um, I, I took the liberty of considering a power purchase agreement whereby the county would work out an agreement with Kit Carson Electric Cooperative, uh, through a PPA. That would something that, that county lawyers would have to work on, but I just wanted to throw this out on the table. Total benefit of a, of a system like that is where you would get reimbursed at a, at a rate of 11 cents per kilowatt-hour. The total benefit of that would be about $36,000 in offset electricity the, the first year, and it's a, a better return on investment. It's about 4.5%, um, which is, which is notable in the low, uh, interest rates in our time. After 16 years, you would recoup the total investment that you spent on the carports. From there on, it would be free electricity for the county. Um, cumulative electric sales over the 24 life experience, uh, or life expectancy of a system like that would be, uh, about $1.5 million. Scenario two would be just to put a solar rooftop array, and that shows the administration building there and the solar modules on top of the building. And we'll go back to the same considerations here. If you just did a net, uh, metering agreement, or, let's, let me back up, I'm sorry. Uh, again, it shows 445,000 kilowatt-hours of use. Uh, the, a solar rooftop array would, would make 176,000 kilowatt-hours, or about 40% of the administration building's electrical use, because you can't fit as many solar panels on the roof as you could on carports. If you did a grid-tied net meter system, uh, with the Electric Cooperative, you're, you would be reimbursed about five cents a kilowatt-hour. This doesn't take into account any of the demand charges. Um, that's why I put that idea of a purchase-power agreement in there. Total benefit for a rooftop array would be about $8,000 the first year, and with a, a return on, cash, cash-on-cash return on investment of about, about 2.5%. You would recoup your total investment in year 22 of the system, and about $300,000 in electric sales in, uh, year 24. Uh, and that's assuming electricity rates go up at 4% a year, which we can pretty well count on that happening. Um, a more lucrative arrangement would be that purchase-power agreement that I talked to you about, and I'm assuming 11 cents per kilowatt-hour. A rooftop array would, the first year's benefits would be about $19,000, and, uh, the cash-on-cash return on investment would be about 6% per year. And then you would recoup your total investment in year 12. In cumulative electric sales over 24-year period for a rooftop array would be close to $800,000. So there are, there are two ideas here about an interconnection agreement with, with Kit Carson to consider, and I'm sure that, um, you guys will take a look at both. The grid-tied system reimburses at, at a set rate of your usage and doesn't take in, into account demand charges. A purchase-power agreement is, you guys are like actually a, a power plant and selling power to the, to Kit Carson Electric, and there's a lot of attendant, uh, you have to be responsible that you can deliver a certain amount of power, and you have, would, I would imagine, have to sign a contract, but you'd have to check into that, and, and we have a 10-year warranty on all of our stuff, so I'll tell you about that a little bit later. One thing that's really notable, uh, about our area here is, uh, Kit Carson Electric Cooperative was recognized by the Solar Electric Power Association Utility of the Year Award. That's a really big deal in the solar world. It, it put, uh, Kit Carson Electric Cooperative and Taos County on the map solar-wise in, in the whole country. Uh, solar people and renewable energy people really look at something like that, and it's, it's, uh, I think it, it helps to bring tourists here. You know, we're a more eco-friendly, uh, place, uh, concerned about global warming, climate change, and it just, and renewable energy concerns. And Luis Reyes also just, uh, got elected to the, the Board of Directors for the New Mexico Green Chamber of Commerce. So, uh, we have some high-profile people in the renewable energy area right here in town, so it's, it's really good for Taos County. Um, I'm going to talk really quickly about, uh, some of the equipment that we use. We're, we've branded our company with Canadian Solar, and also Schletter Carports. Maybe Justin, if you have some questions about the carports, he'll talk to you. Uh, Canadian Solar is some of the best solar panels on the market today. They're the fourth-largest manufacturer in the world. They were founded in 2001. Uh, they have the highest PTC rating, which is a, a measurement of output of, of all the, uh, solar panels in the world. So we, we, we really use high-quality, uh, products in our, in our projects, and we're, we're really proud to be able to offer Canadian Solar. And these are just some spec sheets that, I don't want to take up too much of your time, but you guys will have this on your computer if you wanted to go back and look at the performance of these particular modules. In order to change the electricity that comes onto the carport structure or the roof, you need to have a DC-to-AC inverter, and we, uh, we, uh, sell inverters, or represent companies. Power One is one of them, that have 20-year warranties, and, uh, Selectria Renewables that's, that has a 20-year warranty. What we're especially proud of is the Schletter Solar Carport Systems. Schletter is a company that's been in business for over 40 years. They're an international company. They're right here in Tucson, Arizona, where they manufacture the, the carport structures. We've done several systems with, uh, with Schletter. This is a picture of Emory Law Firm, and this is some rooftop racking on a residential system we did with, uh, using Schletter products. Jason can answer some questions if you have any questions about the actual structuality of any of these. This is a architectural rendering of what the middle carport on the east side structure might look like. These are actual pictures of, of, uh, carports that Schletter has done.
So there was, these would be actually fixed panels? They wouldn't move at all?
Yeah, these would be fixed panels. For a carport structure, it's probably, yeah, that's what it would be on a carport structure. So there's a side view of, of one of them. Oh, in our proposal, or we, we did kind of a preliminary proposal a couple of months ago for, uh, Mr. Archuleta, and if you look in this picture in the foreground and you look up, there's, it shows a roofing structure. If any of you have ever been over to Kit Carson Electric Cooperative, uh, after it snows, it's, this, this is also a water, rain-proof structure rather than just a shade structure. So if you go to Kit Carson after it snowed and the snow is melting, you have to dodge icy water on your way into the, into the building, and, you know, then there's no ice problems underneath the, uh, the structure. And this is a really, you know, good improvement in, in carport structures, rather than just shade, it's dual-purpose. So if the county considered a solar, uh, parking canopy, it's not only just for solar. I mean, it's, you know, it's, it's a rain-proof structure.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in, in looking at this, we had thought about doing that so that we could move a lot of the public parking to that back area so that we could offer that service also to our constituents, so they wouldn't have to be walking in snow or the rain, or those kind of things that'd actually be secured, uh, from the, from the elements or from the weather for them.
So there's a dual benefit, obviously. So there's a, just, so you get an, an idea of scale in that other picture right there to see what they would look like. If you did, considered a rooftop array, um, Schletter is also the company that we would use to do, use the racking to hold up the structure, uh, hold, hold up the panels on the roof. And that's a pretty good rendering, uh, that even looks similar to the kind of roofing that's on the rooftop right now. It's an EPDM roof, and, uh, that's how panels would lay on the roof. I'm, I'm just going to take a, a couple seconds to tell you about our company. We're, uh, we're a totally debt-free company. We've been working here in northern New Mexico for over three decades, uh, in construction and in renewable projects. We're licensed in general construction, we're mechanical and, and plumbing and
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, in looking at this, we had thought about doing that so that we could move a lot of the public parking to that back area so that we could offer that service also to our constituents, so they wouldn't have to be walking in snow or the rain or those kind of things that'd actually be secured from the elements or from the weather for them.
So it's a dual benefit, obviously. So there's a, just, so you get an idea of scale in that other picture right there to see what they would look like. If you did, considered a rooftop array, Schletter is also the company that we would use to do, use the racking to hold up the structure, hold up the panels on the roof. And that's a pretty good rendering. That even looks similar to the kind of roofing that's on the rooftop right now. It's an EPDM roof, and that's how panels would lay on the roof. I'm just going to take a couple seconds to tell you about our company. We're a totally debt-free company. We've been working here in northern New Mexico for over three decades in construction and in renewable projects. We're licensed in general construction, we're mechanical and plumbing and electrical contractors. We're licensed in all those areas. We have really strong relationships with our suppliers, and that's a testament that Justin came out from Tucson today to support us on the Schletter carports. We have the absolute best warranties in the business. So when the county, when the Commissioners consider warranties, if you look at solar warranties, there are 25 years on solar panels, 20 years on inverters, and 20 years on the solar carport. If you compare that to air conditioning systems or any other kind of warranties in the construction business, they're stellar. I mean, they're really reliable systems, and if you have companies that'll stand behind a product for decades, it's considerable. We guarantee the PV production output of a system for five years of service. And if you don't produce the electricity that we say that you're going to produce, we pay for that. We also provide a standard 10-year workmanship warranty, which is really bumper-to-bumper on all of the equipment, in-house in our own, in our own business. We provide all the engineering permitting, and like I said, we're licensed in just about everything in construction in New Mexico. We've, and we're NAB-SEP trained, that's a solar certification that you get. And what's more, kind of important that I think is that we're also CES contractors. And I know that you, the county, is a participating entity with the CES program. We are, we're the only renewable energy contractor with CES. So it makes procurement a lot easier for participating entities like the Taos in order to procure a contractor for the job. And that's about it. I wanted to show you a couple of recent projects. At Eagleness Elementary, we just finished a 100 KW system up there. You all probably have seen Sentinel Bank on the north side, they have a parking structure there, and at Emory Law Firm. And of course, we did Taos Charter School. And that's it. Thank you very much for your consideration, and we can answer questions if you'd like, if you had any structural questions about Justin, he's here to ask.
Thank you, Mr. Johnson, for the presentation. I know that a few weeks ago, myself and Commissioner Barone had an opportunity to travel with yourself and a few other folks, including Steve Foulendorf from Kit Carson Electric Co-op. And it was a good tour of the Santa Fe area, some of the facilities there, the public facilities, including the transportation system, the bus system, and I believe it was a sewage plant located in Santa Fe. And so, did you work on these facilities? I can't remember if...
We didn't do any of the projects in Santa Fe. But you saw how proud Nick Shivo was of the city projects.
Right.
And how important he felt that they were doing these sustainable projects that actually were of economic benefit to the taxpayers.
And they are working well?
They are working really well.
And what keeps us from going 100% instead of the 74%, say for example, on the system that is, that serves as a carport?
For the, for one thing, there's a space limitation. For the administration building to be at totally 100%, you could do a combination of both. You really can't fit that many, the maximum amount of panels that'll fit in the carport. And on the roof, if you did both, you would be overproducing. You'd be making like about 503 kilowatt hours a year rather than 445. You could theoretically, in a combination of system, get rid of the whole electric, or take care of the whole electric bill for the administration building.
Okay, and with that, I'd like to, if we can get some input, and like to welcome Mr. Luis Reyes, CEO of Kit Carson Electric Co-op, and Mr. Steve Foulendorf, if you want to have any input on today's discussion, it's much appreciated. And, you know, I, for one, certainly am interested in this. You know, and of course, it's, the funding part is always a big question, and would like to hear from our county manager with regards to that, and how it's all done, how is it all implemented and put in place so that we can be part of this very important aspect of being able to use solar power.
Chairman, Mark, I know a couple of the projects in Santa Fe were funded, I guess, independently from the town. They were actually funded entirely, and there was no out-of-pocket expenses from the governmental entity. Is there any possibility of that type of funding available anymore? I, you know, I know a lot of those are funded and put up and then owned by a group or individuals, and then the power is sold back to the entity. And I know because of the 5% cap that we have, is that something that can still be done or not be done, or how does all this work out?
Well, let me say first, you know, in my presentation, I made some assumptions on a purchase-power agreement. And in a way, that's sort of out of bounds, because that would be, it's only a possible puzzle, part of a puzzle in a scenario, but that would be an agreement that you'd have to work out with Kit Carson Electric Cooperative. So Mr. Reyes could actually tell us a lot more about that. But in Santa Fe, they have a third-party entity that is involved in those, some of those projects, not all of them. Where a company comes in of investors and they can realize the tax credits by owning the system. So we saw that one by the airport, and there was an entity that owned that system. They built that a couple of years ago when there were better tax incentives. So they get a reimbursement of about maybe 20 cents a kilowatt hour. And they keep 5 cents of that, and the other 15 cents of it goes to Santa Fe. Or they only got 5 cents of it. I don't really remember what it was. But you wouldn't, if the county could fund its own project like that, it's a lot better monetarily if the money's there. Otherwise, you're going to bring a third party involved, and you heard Nick Shivo say that they're not doing that at the Genevieve Chavez Center because they want too much. So it'd be something to explore, to find out, if you had a third party, they would own the structure, they would take care of it, maintenance-wise and that, but you would not get as big a credit, but you may not have to put out the money. It would be something to explore. Actually, Mr. Reyes maybe have, I don't know how some of the systems here in town works, but might be able to shed light on how those arrangements work.
Thank you, Mark.
Mr. Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Would, I guess, I'm assuming that a purchase-power agreement would potentially come up against the 5% limit, whereas if it wasn't under a purchase-power agreement, the 5% Kit Carson limit would not come into play, is that right?
I think you got that exactly right. If there was a purchase-power agreement, I think that comes up against the 5% for sure. The other scenario is something that's called behind the meter, where they don't count it towards the 5% cap.
And what's the cost, total cost of the project?
Total cost of the project for a rooftop array would be, these are all preliminary, but they're very close, would be about $331,000. For a solar carport, you're looking at about $830,000.
And is all of that upfront, or is there any financing?
Well, not unless we found a third-party investor.
Right.
And it wouldn't be all upfront, it would be progress payments.
Right. And the estimated time of completion?
This would take about two months to build a solar carport, and it would take about a month or less to do a solar rooftop array.
Well, thank you, Mark, for the presentation. It really is a great idea. You get payback, you help the environment, it provides a good example to the community. There's just so many good things to say about it. Fortunately, this year, unless we found a private partner, I'm sure the funds would not be available because of, well, questions about Pilt and the dispatch center are the two big ones that come to mind. But it's really worthwhile for us to have this in our minds and look forward to the possibility. It's, it really is a great idea for Taos County, so thank you.
Now, in order to be able to get the 100% usage for the entire building, you could do a combination of the rooftop along with the carport?
That's correct.
Have you assessed that as to what the total cost of that would be?
No, I haven't, but it would be, it would, it would close in on about a million dollars there. Because the two combined are about 1.2 million.
I guess I'm just trying to understand what the relationship, and Mr. Reyes, if you can come, if you can give us some answers, what the relationship would be between Taos County and Kit Carson Electric Co-op on this? How would it all work?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission.
Good morning.
Steve.
Congratulations on your appointment to the...
Oh, thank you.
The Green Board.
As far as the relationship, there'll always be a relationship with the Co-op, because we own all the facilities you'd interconnect. So even if you did it on your side of the meter, you'd have to interconnect into our transformer to make sure that the, you can transform, get that power into a service Purchase-power agreement, as Commissioner Blankenhorn mentioned, does count towards a 5%, but those economically are generally the best avenues to go, because you can get generally third-party financing. Secondly, you get paid for the demand component of the energy. You will never get to 100% buildup, because you'd have to overbuild, because some of your usage is going to be at nighttime. Even if it's minimal, and again, there are certain laws of how you bank that, and you don't get away from the demand charge. The 115-minute period, if you look at your bill, you have two components. You have the energy and you have the demand. The demand is the, and Commissioner Barone knows about the demand cost, it's the 115-minute period in a month that you use the highest power. So you could have 29 days of sunny days and one day that it's cloudy or snowy, and you get charged for that, and demand charge for the entire month. So don't want to mislead that you can go 100% solar. The only way you can do that is when storage becomes more affordable. I do think, again, given Commissioner Blankenhorn's discussion, I do think there are opportunities to forge a good relationship when it comes to building renewable energy in a partnership with the Co-op, because you do get more bang for your buck. We have the three different types of projects. We have purchase-power agreements, we own some facilities, and we have facilities behind the meter. And so currently, Kit Carson operates, maintains, controls about seven megawatts of solar energy in the north. And we'd be happy to sit down with attorney and go over purchase-power agreements and the different components that are important to look at. I think, Mr. Chairman, anything behind the meter, everything sits with you. The maintenance, the ONM, and it's really, you're only getting charged for the kilowatt hour, not the demand component. So as Mark put on the screen, you get 4.6 versus maybe an 11-cent or 12-cent credit, whatever's negotiated for the cost. So again, it is, it's involved. We do have a lot of expertise at the Co-op, and I think maybe working with your staff to get more specifics on how that relationship would work. The other part of our concept with Co-op is then letting someone local build. So just because you have a third-party financer doesn't mean we can't put restrictions on having someone like Soluna build it. So you keep that economic development monies here in the community also. So I would, I would offer that to the Commission and to the staff to sit down and really vet out what the best solutions are that give the county and its residents a bang for their buck while keeping the monies locally.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman. So this particular project would not go beyond the 5%?
If it's, if it's in a purchase-power, it would count against 5%. And we're, Commissioner Blanken, we're in that gray area, we're about 4.5 to 5. So it's a project that may fit. One of the things we're trying to do is really push the envelope, though. We're really not sure if we went to 5.1%, what tri-state would do. And maybe it's, maybe if we had a good partner like the county, maybe we'd try it. But I think, I think our board is willing to push those limits, just because I think it's been a good mix for this area when it comes to delivery services from the different fuel sources.
It really has, and I've always been pleased that it's been recognized, that you and Kit Carson Co-op have been recognized for pushing the envelope on the, on the alternative energy limits. So really, what I hear is that if you could do a purchase-power agreement and there's a 4.6% return, then it's possible to actually get some financing, because that's enough of a return to where you might get somebody else interested, and we wouldn't have to dip into cash reserves. So it's definitely worth a discussion between Kit Carson and staff. Appreciate...
And Commissioner Blankenhorn, I think the time if the county is really interested is start, start those discussions now, because our construction period is relatively short, even though it takes a couple of months. There's testing, we have to report to the Commission, those projects. And overall, from when you start, go out to RFP to build, is about six to eight months to get the first kilowatt hour out of that facility.
It would push us forward, you know, Taos is trying to develop that solar capital image and reality, and it's an important thing. So I love the idea, and I hope that we can move forward on it.
I do, too. And, you know, again, I really feel that we need to be at the forefront of this. We, as a government entity, we have a huge complex, we have the space available. Just hope that we can get the commitment from the entire Commission. And I would like to ask our staff to move forward with this. If we can't do it, you know, right now, we can do it at some point in the future, and we're prepared for it. Would really like to see that, Mr. Archuleta.
And Commissioner, Chairman, Mr. Reyes, is there any possibility of grants out there at this point, or any, you know, have the tax credits gone away? Is there any legislation that needs to be passed federally, or?
Commissioner Barone, the tax credits for a third-party expire in 2016. Really depends on what administration's in charge at that point, if they're going to be extended or not. So anything that's done after that, I wouldn't count on it. That's one reason I've said if you're serious, let's do it now. I think, I think outside of grants, I think most of those have dried up. I think the best model we've seen is when you get a third-party investor come in, because they put up all the capital. And of course, they, they use the tax credit, they use accelerated depreciation, they use some financial tools to their benefit. What a lot of these projects do is, after the first couple of years, they just sell the project. So they've got the benefit, they'll sell the project. The contract is generally 20-year contracts, so it does guarantee some revenue stream for that period of 20 years. So besides getting the financial, you get generally banks behind this. So the model really has worked pretty well. I wouldn't spend a lot of time unless you knew a little place to get grants, because it just takes a lot of energy, and they're competitive grants. And so you're competing with the country. I would look at a solid third-party investment or financial partner that embraces renewable energy and go down that and negotiate terms with that third-party. I think that would be the best bang for your buck, and also for the resources of staff chasing down grants and loans that quite, aren't available. And again, the Co-op, since we've built so much, have tapped just about every place that we've looked, unless there's kind of an angel out there looking to give some money to the county. But outside of that, I think the model we work is proven, and we probably could bring some third-party people to the table.
Do you know of any sources, or?
We know of a lot of sources, but I think we could discuss that with the staff.
Mr. Sanchez?
Yes, Chairman, Commissioners. Mr. Reyes, I want to thank you for coming in today, and also Steve. You know, with your expertise, I know we can move this forward, and just, we want to be good neighbors, and I know you guys are the ones to make it happen. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
Commissioner.
Can we go back a little bit? If we bring in a third party, then the reality would be how much? Once it's up and going, I mean, what's the cost?
So Commissioner Dudon, that's really what you negotiate. You know, they need some money, so they get the tax credit. So generally, there's a 30% tax credit. So if they have a tax appetite, they're paying income tax, they get, whatever the value of that project, they get 30% off the top that they get to write off income tax. If they're a business, then they get the accelerated depreciation, so they get that expense as an expense, so they then mitigate some additional income tax up to 40%. Now, in this state, there's also... in this state, there's also, and at the federal level, there's also a production tax credit that you can get an additional 10%. So the investor, they get their money basically upfront. And then you negotiate what, what part of that, let's say 11 cents, you want. Because they're getting their money through depreciation and tax credit over a period of seven years. So depending on what their tax appetite is, they can offset their income tax for, for up to seven years.
Mr. Johnson, anything else from your part? That's it? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you.
Mr. Archuleta?
I don't have anything.
Okay. Ma'am, go ahead. And state your name for the record.
And Chairman, you know, that it also opens up the opportunity. I know that the law office down here and a couple of other people, we got to ride in a couple of them volts and that were electric cars. And it opens up that opportunity too for the county. And if they were to put, I guess, charging systems out there that would actually charge some of these electric cars that are out there, you know, it might, they might benefit the assessor's office, people that are doing the local, you know, 100-mile radius type things. And I mean, the one we rode in was getting 112 miles to the gallon. That was awesome to see.
Guilt-free driving. And before, hold on a second, ma'am. One of the other things is I know that Commissioner Beroni's also on the, you're chairman of the Board of the NRTD and you're working with Taos County on providing some space for some sort of a carport area for the, the blue bus. And so would there be a reason as to why we couldn't expand the solar array to the other side of the road to be able to accommodate a, a carport like that?
My name is Casey and I've lived in the county and the town. I've been here for 34 years. I've never been in this building. It's really beautiful. And this is the first time I've come to a Commissioners' meeting. I got laid off from the hospital a couple of months ago, so now I have some time on my hands and I'll just call it retirement. But listening to this presentation is really impressive to get to 74% of your usage. But as I'm sitting here, I'm also looking around this room and seeing that maybe another way to save money would be to use less electricity. I'm sure heating probably eats up most of the kilowatt hours, but just looking around this room, I really think that just two panels here would probably suffice. And also during the daylight, I'm not sure we need any of these lights on. I see you're using the fluorescent coils and everything, but I'm sure maybe it's just a drop in the bucket. But I just thought I might be kind of curious to see what the lighting would be like in here if you didn't have any lights on, other than what the camera needs and maybe your backlighting on your stage. But anyway, so I'm just kind of coming from it, like maybe this could approach closer to 100% if there was some less usage throughout the building. So, thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Steve, how, what can we do? What is the next step?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this is definitely something that we're considering for the budget review, excuse me, that'll be coming up now in March for the June timeframe. But we can also start the preliminary discussions with Kit Carson also, so we can move in that area. We wanted to get this in front of the Commission in order to basically expose to the public and to the Commission everything that's available to us and the possibility of that. And so we thought that initially, if we did it as a dual purpose in the back, we could start there and open that up to the public and then eventually we could move forward with that. I also asked them to take a look at the front area of the building also as a possibility. And I know we have a lot of cottonwoods and everything up there, but I wanted to see what the possibility of that is. So we're, we're moving in that direction and looking forward to that. I think some of the Commissioners have actually received packets of the full proposal for this and we'll be discussing that during the budget negotiations on that.
But if we can continue those discussions and making sure we have some roundtable discussions with Kit Carson and, and everyone else involved in this in the very near future. Mr. Archuleta, I would really appreciate that.
Will do, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we'll move on then to Item C. And this is 7C, request for Taos County to be the fiscal agent for the Taupu Community Center. We do have and welcome Ms. Effie Romelo, Director of the Taupu Community Center.
Good morning. I have in your packet a request that we have out at the Legislative Department with our Representative Robert Bobby Gonzalez and Senator Sisnethos. We're asking for $150,000 to put a new roof on the Taupu Community Center. We have had a lot of leaks and problems in the past years. And also to add energy-efficient windows and possibly air conditioning in a couple of the rooms. And we need a physical agent.
Second.
Okay. Madam Clerk, any other discussion? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Effie.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Yes.
Chairman, can we take a five-minute break?
Sure. Okay. Is there, is that a motion?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Is there a motion to come back into session, Commissioners?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Chairman, is it possible we could move up Item C, Item 9C, that resolution by Kit Carson to present and, and Mr. Reyes and, and staff can continue on with their daily activities?
Is that in the form of a motion?
That is, Chairman.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. We'll go on then to Item 9C. This is Resolution Number 2014-5. Mr. Steve Fuldorff, welcome. And-
Chris, CEO of Kit Carson Electric Co-op. It's a resolution requesting that the New Mexico Public Regulation Commission uphold the validity of the protests filed by KCEC, CDC, CDEC, JMEC, and SEC. Continue the suspension of the Tri-State Generation and Transmission Association Incorporated proposed 2014 rate increase. The rate design, change, and conduct and investigate, conduct an investigation and public hearing to establish reasonable rates for Tri-State's wholesale electric sales in New Mexico. Mr. Reyes, welcome again.
Again, Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission, staff, thank you. Today, I'm asking Taos County's support for a resolution that I believe all of you do have in your packet, supporting the Co-op and its members in its challenge to what we deem our unreasonable rate increases by Tri-State GNT. They, in 2013, we were successful in getting three protesters. So in 2013, there wasn't a rate increase from our power supplier to Kit Carson, therefore to the members, which has saved Taos County residents about $1.4 million. What Tri-State did is in November of this, or October of this past year, then refiled the rate with an additional 2% increase on top of that. So the impact would be at minimum 7% to 10% on top of what, let's say in this case, Taos County and its residents are paying today. A troubling fact in their, in their rate is, in their design is called a regulatory charge. So in their tariff, they have the option, if this goes into effect, at the discretion of the Board of Directors of Tri-State, to charge a member or members any fees that they feel are necessary tied to regulatory activity, which is pretty broad because that could be a, a federal case. That could be the work they're doing with the BLM tied to the transmission line to the north. That could be the, the legal fees for the regulatory case we have here in New Mexico. But in essence, it gives a blank check to Tri-State. And if in New Mexico, they've been denied about $15 million for the Co-op's, I have no reason to believe they would not try to collect that because 32 other Co-op's in the other three states have been paying the higher rates. And so it gives a lot of discretion to their board to collect whenever, to whoever they want, which I think is troubling, especially in a regulatory environment where at least you know what your kilowatt hour costs are. The other thing, and we, we talked about it a little bit earlier, is we've integrated the ability to grow our 5% into this rate case. So again, if the Commission were to reverse their decision and allow the rates to go into effect, they would go into effect immediately or effective January 1. But I think it would take any leverage we have today of upping that 5% cap to 10 or 15% because at that point, they got the revenue they need. It's taken us 12 years to get three Co-op's to protest. It's taken us 12 years to get to this point. I'd imagine if the PRC reversed their decision they made in December, it'd be another 12 years for us to do that again. And so, you know, we need to seize that opportunity. And we're asking again, the support, the leadership of Taos County to help us with that. Additionally, asking any of the members of the Commission or staff that could attend that hearing on behalf of their constituency. We'd appreciate that because in reality, they would bill Kit Carson and then Kit Carson would just pass that on to the rate payers. And so there is a lot of words there. We are getting good support for, for the rest of the community, but I think in the end, Mr. Chairman, grassroots works, people talking to their Commissioners and being in front of their Commissioners saying, this is not a good time to raise rates, especially when we're still dealing with economic issues. And I think they're going to be heightened by with the drought situation. I think tourism and, and activities in the forest are going to diminish quite a bit if we don't get moisture, which is going to affect us economically, which then puts pressure on people to pay their, pay their bills, especially electric bills. So with that, I'd stand for any questions any, any member of the Commission may have.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez?
Chairman Commissioners, Mr. Reyes, I just want to thank you for being the first one that jumped on board to not have the rate increase. I know Kit Carson was very instrumental on getting others. So we're headed out of this meeting today and I plan on, I talked to the manager on hand delivering the, the resolution to our PRC Commissioner in Santa Fe today or tomorrow when I meet up with Valerie Espinoza. And I have gotten calls from my constituents in my area and others that this is, they can't afford it. You just mentioned that, Mr. Reyes, and thank you for bringing that up. And we're, I am in support of it.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, sir.
Motion to approve our Resolution 2014-5.
Okay. Any other discussion?
Second or is it, is already second?
I had one question. The hearing is in Santa Fe at the Para Building. When does it take place?
Next, the 2029, next Wednesday at 9:30. We have asked the Commission to put us first on the agenda in the anticipation of having some folks from the area there. And also there is a public comment period since this is an open meeting of the PRC. As Chairman, if, if you or other Commissioners were able to attend, I think it'd be important to, to voice on behalf of the county constituents, your support of Kit Carson and opposition to Tri-State.
Okay. Mr. Archuleta, did you plan to attend?
Yes.
Okay. So maybe Mr. Archuleta or one of the Commissioners can in fact present this, this resolution that we'll be adopting today in, in person and read it out before the, the Commission.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. Madam Clerk?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes, yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on then to Item 8. This is contracts, agreements, MOUs, RFPs, and bids. Discussion, really consideration, decisions regarding the following. This is Item A. This is a contract with RBC Capital Markets. Mr. Leandro Cordova?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, today I'm asking for approval of a contract with RBC Capital Markets to perform financial advisory duties for the county. The contract has been reviewed by legal. They made a few changes and RBC signed off on it. So I stand for any questions.
Chairman, this is for like-
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Doudan, financial advisory services, primarily the scope would be for RBC to help us investigate the idea of a geo-bond sale for the improvement of public roads and bridges. And, but they also do a lot of other things for us. They look at our total debt load. They look at any possibility of refinancing anything that's outstanding. And they give us a, a little bit of a strategic plan to look forward for our financing needs.
And, and at what cost?
They get paid only upon issuance of bonds. So they will only get paid upon the issuance of a bond and the, the amount of that is a set rate. And let me look at it and I'll tell you. If the bond issue is under $2 million, they make $13,500. If the bond issue is between 2 and 5 million, they make $23,500. If it's between 10 and 20 million, they make $28,500. And anything over 20 million is $35,000 plus a dollar per 1,000 over the 20 million. So honestly, part of, when we went through the RFP process, part of what attracted them, us to them was that it was a clear-cut structure. It was the same for every one of their clients, whether we're a Bernalillo County or a Hidalgo County, they're the same for all their clients. And you know exactly what you're getting going into every bond issue. So that's kind of what we, and they do serve for the county. They work for the county. And just as an example, a difference between this and the last bond issue we did for the educational GRT, we didn't have an FA representing us. And we probably could have found some savings by having them shop out the bond when they go to the underwriter. And that's a big advantage to having them. They save us a lot of money on interest rate and over the length of the, the term of whatever bond they do serve.
Thank you. Any other questions or comments? A motion has been made for approval. Is there a second? I'll go ahead and second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Thank you, Leandro. And we do have a, a second item. We amended the agenda. This is Item 8B, the Financial Audit Report.
Yes, Mr. Chairman Commissioners, thank you. Today I have with us Robert Gonzalez from our auditing firm of Accounting Consulting Group. We're, first of all, I'll apologize. I meant to give you guys all a hard copy of the audit, which was delivered to us apparently the day after Christmas and we can't find it. They say there's somewhere in the building. So if we don't get them to you by the end of the day, they have agreed to send us another set of hard copies. I have sent you guys an Adobe PDF of the audit and all, full disclosure, it's available on the State Auditor's website under the Taos County 2013 Audit. So it's, it is available and it's out there for public record. And I'll turn it over to Mr. Gonzalez right now.
Thank you. Mr. Chairman, County Commissioners, thank you for allowing me to represent County Consulting Group with the board presentation of the fiscal year 13, 2000, or, audit. And our firm was the prior auditors before we rolled off a couple of years ago. This is the first year back. And we started our audit in mid-August. We were able to get it out by the deadline, which is November 15th, 2013. We received the okay-to-print in December and the release letter December 20th, which meant you guys had to wait five days to actually release it to the public. This year was a little different than prior years. In prior years, the Housing Authority was a component unit, a discreetly presented component unit. This year, it was more like a department. We call it a blended component unit, which meant that it did not have an outside board. It was, it was a department of the county. This year, the opinions that you guys rendered was a qualification. And what this does, it means is we were able to find sufficient audit evidence over all areas of the audit except certain ones. And those areas are the business-type activities related to the Housing Authority, both programs, the low rent and the Section 8, when it relates to the financial, or the fixed assets, and related to the governmental activities, the indigent fund. Now, a qualified opinion is not the cleanest. The cleanest opinion would be an unmodified opinion. However, the difference between an unmodified- However, the difference between an unmodified opinion and a qualification and a disclaimer is, related to disclaimer, we were not able to find any type of evidence. That was not the case in either the Housing Authority or the county. You guys received a qualified opinion, meaning we were able to find sufficient audit evidence throughout the county and the Housing Authority except for those three areas. There were 10 new findings in current year. You guys did resolve the only prior year finding.
Chairman, let me ask this question. How many findings was there at the housing?
The housing had several, over 20. So it definitely was not cleaned up as much as I know you guys were hoping for, definitely.
So let me ask this question. Next year, when this audit comes forward again and there ain't no findings, will be three categories that you stated.
Yeah, during our procedures, management, Leandro and Mr. Archuleta were very proactive. Any findings that we brought to their attention, they were very proactive in mitigating those and seeing what they needed to do to clear them. Several of these were, already had management responses by the time we left the field of the audit, not even when we were drafting the financials, but when we were leaving the field. The rest of them, several of them, should be cleared by next year. And I don't know if you guys are going to have the Housing Authority at the end of this fiscal year or not, but if you do not, then their findings will go away and then it would just focus on the findings that we find with you guys. The findings were really not related to the opinion, though. The findings, there were several new findings, material misstatements, that type of stuff, and hopefully those are cleared. The issue that was related to the qualified opinion on the county's side was related to the indigent fund. There were several issues with the indigent fund in current year for 13, related to not only internal controls and reporting, but just providing us sufficient evidence that those expenditures were proper. And that's why you guys got the qualification.
Let me ask the question, how many findings on that one?
On the indigent fund? There were several bullet points in the indigent fund, mostly related to knowledge and not following compliance with rules, laws, and regulations. However, that was the prior people that ran it. We do have really good intentions for this person that is there now to ensure that none of this happens in hopefully 14.
But you didn't answer my question. How many findings?
There was one finding related to the indigent fund with several bullet points. 13 total bullet points in the finding.
13?
All related to internal controls, insufficient documentation, not following compliance of the Indigent Fund Act.
If I may, just on that note, having the new indigent fund coordinator has resolved the majority of those issues right off the bat, having her come in. You guys have already worked on changing policy. She's brought changes to procedures in front of you that you've made those changes on. And so, we're well on way in correcting those major issues.
Mr. Chairman Commissioner, I also want to add to that, that part of what we found when we were looking at the indigent is that the previous coordinator basically was using the old computer software, I guess is what it was. And there is some new software that was out there that wasn't being utilized. And so, as you well know, the indigent coordinator currently has been using the new software, but also going backwards and bringing all the old information in today. But she's brought over two years of information that should have been put in there. So she's done a good progress in that aspect.
Let me add just one thing. I know this wasn't under your watch, but county manager should have been up with this, right?
Mr. Chairman Commissioner Duran, basically, you know, part of the reason Taos County went out for a new auditor was for that preliminary reason. We wanted to look at every aspect within Taos County and give this commission the best audit that we could have. And with the previous one, we just weren't happy with the product that we were getting out. And so, for that reason, we asked staff to come forward to bring up any issues that were there so that we could have a clean audit and so that we could correct any issues or concerns that there were out there.
We're there. Going along, you guys also received a single audit. And this is related to your federal awards. And the programs that we tested in this audit were both related to the Housing Authority, the Section 8, and the low rent. And on that, you also received a qualified opinion, which again means we were able to find sufficient audit evidence over the majority of areas. There were just a couple of areas that we were not able to find sufficient audit evidence. And that's what, why there was a qualification. Other questions?
Do you need approval or acceptance of the audit report by this commission today?
The normal processes that you guys do.
Mr. Chairman, let me ask this question. How did Taos News get hold of it before we approved it? Huh? What was that, man?
It's on his website.
Oh, okay.
I'll repeat that that was somewhat our fault. Like I said, the hard copies were delivered December 26. They became available on the state auditor's website, I believe, on the same day, the 26th, 27th. And so, it was public record at that time. So I haven't given you a hard copy. I did send you the.
I guess in the past, the audit would not be let out to the public until it was approved by the commission. Wasn't that the case before?
No. The standard rule in the state auditor basically states that once they release the release letter to our firm and to the county, in five business days, it can be public knowledge.
I see. Okay.
Motion to approve?
I'll go ahead in second. Any other discussion? Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Pass you.
We'll move on to item 9A, Resolutions, Ordinances, Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. This is item A, Resolution 2014-3. Mr. Alan Sanchez, our Fire Chief, Resolution Establishing the San Cristobal Fire District.
Thank you, Chairman and Commissioners. This, members of the San Cristobal community were actually in front of the commission back in November to be recognized. And this is the resolution to formally recognize the establishment of a fire district for San Cristobal. And then they would go through the process of going through the state to be recognized as a full-fledged fire department.
Very good. Okay. Any other discussion? Approve? Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Yes, and congratulations. Okay, we'll move on to item B, Resolution 2014-4. Mr. Malone, County Attorney, Resolution Requesting Consideration of Alternatives to Los Alamos National Laboratory's Proposed Plan of Leaving Nuclear Waste Buried in Place at TA-54, Area G. Mr. Malone?
Mr. Chairman, we put my name down on the agenda as the presenter because I made revisions to the draft resolution that citizen members had provided. We didn't know who was going to be here as a citizen member, but if they want to present their position for the resolution, I think that would be appropriate, Mr. Chairman. And they were only edits, they were not substantive changes.
Okay.
It was primarily to make it applicable to Taos County because the draft was, I think, something that Santa Fe County had passed.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Malone. Go ahead and state your name for the record and thank you.
Yes, my name is Marilyn Hoff. I'm in Mr. Blankenhorn's district. It will be harder for me to speak in favor of this resolution, not knowing what the revisions were. So I hope at some point you would explicate them. I know that Mr. Blankenhorn has expressed reservations about passing a resolution now because there will be resolutions before the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities coming up next fall, next, excuse me, next February. One of those resolutions would be verbatim the resolution that we submitted to you at the last meeting. Now, I believe Mr. Blankenhorn is going to propose that this resolution be tabled in anticipation of whatever the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities does. And I want to express my profound disagreement with what I believe he is going to propose, at least what he has told us he will propose. I think his argument is that there is not enough money. And my argument is, well, duh, of course, there is enough money. And there will never be enough money unless we ask for it and unless we make our position clear to especially the New Mexico Environment Department that we want Lantal cleaned up thoroughly. Area G is not only threatening us by its surface contamination, but is also threatening regional aquifers because much of what was buried at Area G was legacy waste, which was not in any way sufficiently contained and is freely melding with the soil and descending to the regional aquifers. I believe that this is a resolution. It is not a law. It is not an appropriation. It is an expression of the desires of Taos County and of various of your people's constituents. And what I think we need to do is make it clear that we want a thorough cleanup of Area G and of the ground beneath Area G, which is threatening regional water supplies, and that this resolution is a very good resolution. It was proposed, in fact, by the chairman of the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities. It was passed by the town of Taos at the instigation of Andrew Gonzalez, who is also with the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities. And I believe that if we express this not only to the New Mexico Environment Department that we want a thorough cleanup, but that also, this will be our way also of influencing the Regional Coalition of Lantal Communities, that this is the desire of not only the town of Taos, the city of Santa Fe, but also of Taos County. Because I know that there are many people in Taos County, constituents like myself, who would agree with this resolution and would support it. So I hope you will pass it today and not table it. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Anyone else in support of this resolution?
Good morning Commissioners. I am Jean Richards. I've been on the Democratic Town Committee forever, the Central Committee of the Democratic Party. And I've been here 30 years. And I have been working on two projects. One is water and one is anti-nuclear. And I have worked with Greg Mello from the Los Alamos Study Group very hard. We did have a lawsuit against Lantal and prevented the $6 billion CMRR building to make more pits, pits being nuclear warheads. They now have a, well, they just keep going. They want to make, either repair our old pits or make new ones underground. And there is no money in the government, I don't think, fortunately, to do this. But, all right, then. Companies have a wonderful way of doing new projects and then they just leave their mess. Look at Mollycore. Mollycore has still not been cleaned up. Chevron is, I've been up there to the mine and they've got a plan to do it. Anyway, that's going to take a lot and it's been taking a lot for 30 years. And this Area G is terrible. They passed something to get rid of it and they started taking stuff to whip. Two or three years ago, that terrible fire, they had so many firemen because they knew if Area G had gone, it would be, we'd all probably not be here. They only have 3,000 tons of plutonium up there. Now, not on Area G, but Los Alamos is a time bomb. Something is going to happen. They're going to have an earthquake there or they're going to have a fire and we're all going to suffer. So as far as this resolution, it's a start to pass, to show the whole towns and counties, which is huge, northern New Mexico's support for a good cleanup. They've started the surface area cleanup and it's taking forever because they've been dumping stuff since the 50s. So I really hope that even if it isn't the end result, you will pass this resolution to give a start to somewhere, finding the funds for the government or BEKTAL. BEKTAL should never be running that, but never mind, that's my own opinion. They're very, they go cost overruns, they, they, they never, you know, they never do anything on time or on the dollar. Very bad administration. Anyway, I hope you pass this reservation, resolution that the town has already passed and Santa Fe has passed. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Okay, Mr. Malone, if you could shed some light on some of the changes that you did make so that we can move forward.
Mr. Chairman, the only substantive change was...
I will allow you. Hold on a second.
Mr. Chairman, the only substantive change was to add the fourth whereas paragraph, whereas Taos County is often directly downwind of Area G. Originally, this was all couched in terms of the impact on Santa Fe. And if this commission chooses to support this resolution, certainly there should be something in here that identifies the impact on Taos County. The rest of the changes were what I call copy edit changes and there's no substance change. The resolution as presented, all the substance is still in here.
Any other discussion from the commission? Commissioner Blankenhorn?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So there's a lot of cleanup that's been going on at Los Alamos under a court order, similar to quest in the sense that there's no court order in quest yet, but eventually that will be the result. And under the court order, they're going to say, you've got to do this, 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 and this by a certain amount of time. That's what happened in Los Alamos. It's been going on for five or six years, a couple of billion dollars. But the consent decree has only focused on all of the surface stuff because that's most imminently dangerous, all of the surface radioactive waste. And there's been a lot of good work done on that. But it is important that we don't forget about Area G. Area G, as the speakers have noted, was where during the 40s and 50s, when they were cranking out this stuff and didn't know much about it, they just dug a big old pit and threw cardboard boxes and crates down in there and buried it. And it has not been part of the ongoing discussions about cleanup because according to some, it's been contained. But the fear is earthquake, fire, flooding, that kind of thing. And it's a legitimate fear that we have to consider. So I don't disagree with the notion that we have to, that it's important for Taos County to take a position on Area G. What I suggested to people who have emailed me and that I've been in communication with is that this resolution is going to be taken up by the Regional Coalition on February 19th. is that this resolution is going to be taken up by the Regional Coalition on February 6th. Now, there's currently one estimate that it's going to cost $6 billion to dig it up and take it to WIP, and another estimate that it's going to cost 60. In the meantime, we only have $250 million this year to do surface cleanup, and next year, we're hoping to get another 250 to hopefully finish the surface cleanup. So, it's not something that is going to happen, is very likely to happen right away, and I wanted to hear the debate in front of the Regional Coalition and see what kind of resolution that we came up with there before Taos County considered it. But I'll defer to the board on this. I am not opposed to this resolution. My idea was, let's wait for the Regional Coalition to come back. But I'll defer to the board and see where you all want to go.
Anyone else from the public?
Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm Susan McCarthy. I am a resident for, like all the gals that have come in today practically, I've been here 30 some years only, and have been very active with peace action and have attended endless numbers of demonstrations and presentations and lectures and informative discussions about nuclear waste. We are downwind. It is true that we're talking about surface waste a lot nowadays, but buried nuclear waste has been, from the beginning, one of the most serious dangers to our area. Amigos Bravos has done a lot of research on nuclear waste in riverbeds around Espanola and San Ildefonso, and all water, all waterways are connected ultimately, and we will suffer from it. We have also suffered from the great fire down there that turned our skies orange and made many of us ill. I'm sure that there will be a lot of cost to clean this up, but that doesn't mean that we mustn't support those efforts. $6 million, or $6 billion, or $60 billion, often an estimate so high as the latter, is made to dissuade people from taking action. I ask you to support this resolution because talking about another interval and another period of waiting is just more of the same. Thank you for your time.
Commissioner Barone?
I'll make a motion to adopt Resolution 2014-4.
One second.
Okay. Any other discussion? Not. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Most definitely yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Commissioners, we'll move on then to item, thank you very much. We'll move on to Item 9D. We've covered 9C, Resolution 2014-6. Mr. Rick Bellis, this is a resolution certifying the expenditure of funds for the year 2014 pursuant to the Secure Rules Schools and Community Self-Determination Act of 2000.
Commissioners, at your last meeting, you approved the overall spending allocation under secure schools money. One of those portions was an additional $40,000, which was the smaller amount for Title III. We have some residual funds that, while encumbered or unspent, behind the resolution, you see in Attachment A, a budget of the money and how it'll be spent. We don't have a lot of latitude. There are broad categories by which the money is spent and certain percentages to those. In the past, money's just sort of rolled over, and we're trying to clean up that process so that there's a formal resolution under which you approve the budget categories, the work plan, which is attached behind that under 2014 Title III Implementation, and that we forward this for publication in the newspaper. So, we'd ask you to approve the budget, direct staff to publish, and that all comments on the budget be forwarded to the Secretary of Agriculture and our local U.S. Forest Service representative to create a record.
Thank you, Mr. Bellis. Any questions, remarks from the Commission?
Mr. Bellis, is any of this money, I know that, I don't know where the monies that was used in that, we did some thinning and stuff in Taos Canyon, is any of this money from this particular, I guess, pot allocated to those type of things? I didn't, in your, in your format here, I didn't see any of it, but is there another pot of money that addresses that?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner, the actual vast majority of that money is under the non-federal lands grants or the competitive grants that we can apply through Association of Counties or U.S. Forest Service under their Title II allocations, which you'll see probably next month when we come back to you. What we try to do with this money, Congress has mandated that be moved more into implementation, like you're talking about, is that we use this for soils and conservation, Forest Service and ourselves, to satisfy the matching requirement because this is one of the few pots of federal money that you can use to match federal money, and that way it doesn't come out of our general fund. So, usually it's a 10% match because of the work we've done, that we have a multi-year plan. We don't have to do a larger match, so we can get a lot of bang for the buck out of this.
Thank you.
Commissioner Sanchez?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Mr. Bellis, is there any, any or cleaning up in District 2, any of this monies that would go to that area?
Mr. Chairman, yes, Commissioner. If you look on that budget, the first line item on that graph up there, it does include cleanup days, brush cleanup days. We did some this year, and we intend to do a lot more. We bought last year a brush hog and a chipper and some of the equipment, which we've transferred over to the Solid Waste Department. So, all we really need to do is cover the tipping fees of actually taking that brush in. The rest of it, we're ready to go. So, yeah, we intend to do at least one, preferably two cleanups in every community in the county in the next year.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments, Commissioners? If not, is there a motion?
I move.
Second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Commissioners.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move on to Item 10. Department Matters Discussion, Consideration, Decisions Regarding the Following. Item A, Public Works Director, Mr. Rick Chavez. This is a report of the road viewers meeting that happened on Thursday, January 16th, viewing of the panorama Boulevard north of Amalia and Yano Road, north of Cuesta, both of which are in Taos County. Mr. Chavez?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners. I'll go with Yano Road first, on those listed second. That's north of Cuesta. In fact, it kind of straddles the village boundary. But I took the road viewers, three members of the road viewer committee, and they looked at it, and the road itself is lower than the surrounding roadside or terrain, so therefore the road of itself is, the drainage is where the water goes. Also, being at the base of the foothills there, it drains towards the highway, towards 522. So, what was observed by the members was that it would take probably at least two feet of pit run or material to raise the road above the elevation of the surrounding terrain. However, nothing could be done about the drainage because the drainage would flow on both sides of the road, get to an irrigation ditch, which is almost to the terminus, and then pass that irrigation ditch as it curves back towards Yano Road, the pit portion. There's also another irrigation ditch, so the water now pools in front of the first irrigation ditch, then whatever goes over the road, I suppose, or the adjacent terrain, then also pools right before the next drainage or irrigation. So, based on those things, based on the amount of money that it would take, I believe it was like $30,000, no, $10,000, just for the pit run, not including transportation costs or the operators, and at a cost of $1.50, which is what we would normally get it at the landfill, although if it was acquired locally, it would probably be more than that. In the past, we've gotten estimates or quotes for, I believe, like $5 a ton, so it would cost a substantial amount of money. Based on those observations by the road viewer committee, it was recommended by them to you to not adopt Yano Road.
Chairman, Commissioners, Rick, what would be the total cost then if, you know, we're not going to do it now according to the road review committee denied it, but what would have been the total cost to have done it if it would have happened, so I can take back to the constituents?
It's in your report. Unfortunately, I can't pull that, pull that up, but it's $10,000, as I said, just on pit run.
Just the pit run alone?
Just pit run, not including transportation, which if we haul from a landfill, of course, that's costs a lot of money to go all the way to Cuesta. If, however, it's obtained locally, it'll be less transportation but more cost of the pit run. So, $10,000, $15,000 at least just for material. Now, the other thing I feel to mention, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, is that in your packet also, you have aerials from the assessor's office that shows property boundaries, which indicates that the boundaries are platted up against the road, so in essence, the road is not owned by anybody, which is advantageous for your consideration, but also it seems like it's about 50 feet wide, so it also allow for, if it was adopted, to improve it. But as I said, the costs are not recommended by the...
And we're talking about Panorama Boulevard? Is that the...
Yano Road.
Yano, okay.
That's only half a mile long, or at least the portion that the petitioners want us to adopt is half a mile. The other thing I might add, Commissioners, is one of the members that attended was the Saddle Fire Chief, which I believe he may have provided a letter previously, maybe it was the Cuesta Fire District, I don't know, but anyway, he made a similar recommendation. It was unanimous, as you can see.
So, Mr. Blankenhorn?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I always wish we could take over as many of these roads as possible, but this is one where the, I guess, the costs relative to the number of people that use it make it impractical for us to consider it, and so appreciate the work of the road viewers on this one. Thank you.
Do we need a motion to adopt the road viewers?
Recommendation.
Recommendation?
Yes, we should vote on this, yes.
Individually or as a whole? Individually?
Well, there's, there's two separate road viewers, so it needs, two different roads. It should be individually.
I'll move to accept the road viewers committee's report.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, Commissioner Sanchez, any thoughts on, any other thoughts? This is your district.
Well, I'll take this back to my constituents. I don't know why, and it was denied. Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, thank you, Mr. Chavez. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
No.
Yes.
Yes.
Regretfully, yes. Okay. We'll then move on to the next item. Mr. Chavez, this is a petition presented for consideration, the adoption of Tres Lomas Road in Rojoondo.
Chairman, we have one other, we have Panorama.
I'm sorry, let's go ahead and go on.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, Panorama is also in District 2. It is probably less than a half mile from the Colorado border north of Amalia. This road is 1.56 miles long. It is similarly, the condition is similar to what we discussed on Yano Road. The road itself is beneath its surrounding or adjacent lands. That also similarly is platted with about 50 feet of cement, let's call it, but there are three structures, the whole 1.56 miles. There is a fifth wheel that a person who was there commented on that he proposes to build later on, and also some other kind of dwelling. I don't know what it was. It's kind of like tarp. I don't know what it was. I assume that people lived there, but based on the number of residents that would be served by adoption, it seems like there would be about maybe 10 in a mile and a half, over a mile and a half. That, assuming that we have 50 feet and we can widen that road to 18 feet for two-lane traffic, again, the cost for that would be over $30,000. That's three times the length of Yano. Again, assuming 18 feet wide, two feet of pit run, that's over $30,000, again, not including transportation and operator costs. Based on all those things and on the things that are listed on your factor sheet, the road viewer committee, the same three members have voted not to recommend it to you.
Not to?
Not.
Okay, Commissioner Sanchez, were you aware of these recommendations?
Yeah.
Any other comments from the rest of the Commission?
Let me just make a comment. Maybe we couldn't put this on the legislative priorities, see if the senator might come up with, need $150,000. Now, since he's in that district, you know.
Problem is that we already have those priorities submitted.
All the other ones, no.
Got to be on the ICIP for one.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, it's something that we could do to take the steps forward, one, to get it on the ICIP, and then, the problem is that it's not a county road, so it hasn't been adopted, and that's the issue, is if it was adopted, then we could get it on the ICIP and then go and ask for some money on that. Possibly in the future, if we do do the bond, that this is something that we can look at as a possibility if we have the bonding capacity and the amount of money to do that. But it would have to go back to the road viewers for recommendation again, and it would have to come back in front of the Commission at that time.
Mr. Chairman, Chairman, Commissioner, also, Rick, I see that the chief, fire chief from Saddle was there also on that, so he looked at that road then.
Mr. Chairman?
Okay.
So, I move to accept the recommendation.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Madam Clerk?
Could I interject a second, Mr. Chairman?
Sure.
Under discussion. So, I had these backwards, obviously. Last one was, this is the one that only serves 10 residents, but still has costs, and the Yano one actually serves 120 residents, apparently, the one more. And so that, you know, to me, the big factors are kind of balancing the number of citizens who use the road with the costs. And I know we're on the Panorama, not on Yano now, but I just wanted to correct myself, and I guess the deal with Yano was, even though there's so many people who use it, it's just so low that the expense was so great, and that was the point of, I'm trying to get at, you know, the reasoning behind the road viewers' recommendations.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Blankenhorn, the expense was one consideration, but also the drainage. There is nothing, at least, seeming to engineer something or acquire properties to take care of that, you know. Once it becomes a county's problem, then people are going to, well, not problem but responsibility, then folks are going to want us to deal with that.
So, you know, just to be clear, that, you know, we are trying to make these decisions based on cost and number of people served, and unfortunately, both of these roads, it's either too few people served or much too high a cost for us to handle at this point. And so, I will, I will agree with the road viewers' recommendations.
Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes.
No.
No.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Madam Clerk, thank you. Mr. Chavez, next item.
Chairman, this is a petition turned in for the adoption of Tres Lomas Road. For those of you that don't know where that is, it's also in District, well, it's in District Four, not Two. And it goes, if you get out of the drainage or the river from Rojo Hondo over to the top, then it's the first road that curves back around, comes back down on Lower Hondo. Anyway, that's B001 or what's called those Zero Three North. As you turn and kind of parallel New Mexico 522 back, at the very top, there's a road that goes off to the west in an osterly direction. That's Tres Lomas Road. I believe it's about half a mile long that these folks are wanting for commissioners to consider for adoption, so I stand for your direction.
Chavez, is that the, where the old Buffalo community or old?
Not Buffalo, it's not in the valley. If you're on Lower Hondo, then it was off in the valley down there somewhere.
Oh, okay. So move for approval to have the road viewers committee review this road and bring back a recommendation.
Nick? Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. We'll move on to item 10C. This is resolution number 2014-7. Mr. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director. This is a resolution authorizing the execution and delivery of a loan and intercept agreement with NMFA.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, items C through H are all pertaining to the same loan. And I'll just kind of, if I can, overview the entire loan. On, I think it was December 20th, I went before the NMFA board seeking approval of this loan for the amount of $358,544. It was approved. Of that amount, $320,000 will be given to solid waste to purchase two roll-off trucks and a pickup truck. The additional $35,854 goes into a reserve, which will be there available at the end of the loan. And then there was a fee of $2,689. The final interest rate on this loan is 1.23 percent, and it's for a six-year term. We're looking at, the highest monthly payment at the end of the loan would be $5,350 per month, and at the end of the loan, we'll be paying $64,205 for the year. So resolution number 2014-7 is the actual resolution adopting the loan and the intercept agreement.
Mr. Chairman, two roll-off trucks. What's the mileage on the ones they have now?
I believe Mr. Martinez said their new truck is in excess of $280,000, and then the other truck is, I believe, in excess of $700,000 miles.
No overhaul yet?
Well, we've been pumping a lot of money into these trucks. That's kind of what prompted the whole pursuit of the loan, is at one point in the fall, we're doing about $6,000 to $7,000 a month in repairs and maintenance on these vehicles. It was almost more than the.
About what kind of repairs?
I am not qualified to give those. I apologize. I can tell you how much they cost, but I don't remember exactly what they were.
Because if you're doing $5,000 or $6,000 a month, the trucks had already been rebuilt. You know?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I believe the last repair that was done to the truck was actually on the hydraulic system for the picking up of the barrels and stuff, but we have had numerous attempts. The truck has been actually on the side of the road a couple of times over the weekends that we've had to go over and pick up the vehicle, have it towed back in into the yard. Part of what we're looking at is actually that the loan amount doesn't supersede the life of the truck when we're looking at the amount of mileage that's being put on the truck. And so that's why we went for a six-year loan. The other thing is that they had sunsetted a loan for the backhoe, and because of that, we were trying to make sure that, one, we sustain the solid waste. It's an enterprise fund, which is very different than other funds that are out there in the county. Basically, any money that comes in, and correct me if I'm wrong, Leandro, that comes into Taos County, basically, or comes into the solid waste department, stays with the solid waste department. It doesn't go back into the general fund and can't be pushed out to other areas. And so what we're trying to do is sustain those enterprise funds to make sure, one, that we're providing the service and a good service to the community, but second, that we're also in a good position to make sure that the vehicles are running and that we're able to sustain those.
And as I understand, Commissioner, the new truck will continue to be in operation. The old truck, they've hoped to maybe either work out some kind of deal with the town, a trade on a crusher. They have ideas on how to use the old equipment, and they're going to make the most of what they have. But the new truck, I believe, will continue to be in operation, and they'll just have these other two new trucks to help them get through their next cycle of replacement.
Commissioner Duran?
No.
Commissioner Sanchez?
The Chairman Commissioners, also, Leandro, the maintenance and the towing, I'm sure they're up there as far as prices, you know. Towing for something like that's not cheap, I'm sure.
No, Commissioner Sanchez, you're right, and that's kind of where we're finding the money to pay for this. We realized when we were doing the mid-year reviews, they won't need as much in their maintenance budget for next year with these newer trucks, so that gives them.
And then I guess another thing to touch on would be the safety of the equipment being on the road. You know, is it safe for the people on the road, or even for the driver, for that matter?
Yes, and I think that was the main concern of Mr. Martinez, was to make sure his guys were safe and they were able to continue working without interruption, based on breaking down.
Thank you, Leandro.
And Mr. Cordova, I think, Chairman, you know, I know these trucks take a lot of abuse. If this truck was just a road truck, you know, a million miles is common. You know, these trucks are stop and go, and, you know, a lot of rural pickups and stuff like that, they do take a lot of abuse, you know. These kind of sit in the same category as log trucks. Their life expectancy is about 500,000 miles, tops. And then we have a good team in that particular department, so I recommend, or I'll make a motion to move forward with this resolution.
Okay.
Second.
Any other discussion? This is resolution number 2014-7. Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to the next item, D. This is the loan agreement with NMFA. Leandro?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I kind of mentioned the terms of the loan upfront. Six-year term, 1.23 percent interest rate. It's an intercept of our environmental GRT. The environmental GRT has been feeding that fund balance since the loan, the previous loan was paid off in the springtime. And so we've been able to bank that money up to this point. GRT's up, so they definitely have the budget to make these payments. And I stand for any other questions.
Let me go back a little bit. Leandro, these trucks are going to go put out for bid, or you guys going to go under federal contract or state contract?
Commissioner Duran, I believe Mr. Martinez was looking at a state contract. Well, he was looking at a couple options. He looked at Brookner's, I think he looked at Mack Truck. I know he looked at about two or three options, and I'm not sure who he was leaning towards, but they were all state contracts that he was looking at.
Let me just put out something, is all these new vehicles, because they have that new emission, most of them are in the shop 80 percent of the time.
I didn't want to hear that.
That's true. Any model from 2008, you got to buy a model from 2008 back. Anything new, you going to have problems? MCT's got a bunch of, you know, roll-offs, 80 percent of the time, the trucks are in the shop.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, is there any recommendations that you have? I'm not sure, you know, I don't mind Mr. Martinez talking to you about, you know, possibly one that's better than the other, being that that's your business and you know trucks. I just don't know how we could go back and purchase a 2008 vehicle at this point. But is there any recommendations that you would have for a new 2013 vehicle and what are possibly better?
The only recommendation that I would have is just not to void the warranty, you know. You got to take off all that emission off. The only way, because other than that, they're in the shop.
And is that legal to do that?
I don't know if it would avoid the warranty or not. I know this buddy of mine's got a brand new one, and that's what he had to do. Truck was in the shop, he wasn't making no money, you know.
And Mr. Archuleta and Mr. Cordova, just so, those trucks are specked out for the job they're going to be doing, because, you know, we don't want to buy highway trucks for the type of trucks that are needed to make sure that the, you know, the suspension and rear ends are, and transmissions are specked out for, and frames, because now we start twisting frames and breaking rear ends, you know, if we're using light-duty trucks that are not specified for this type of work.
Make sure they spec them out at a double frame.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, if you don't mind, I'd like to direct Mr. Martinez to meet with both of you and make sure that we look at those before we actually, and that you guys have some input into that before we make a decision, if that's okay with you guys?
Okay.
The actual closing date on the loan is March 7th, so that does give us a little time for him to pick the right vehicle before he has access to the funds, so.
They'll move for approval, Chairman.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay, we'll move on to item E. This is the intercept agreement with NMFA. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, the intercept agreement, like I mentioned, is of the GRT, the environmental GRT, I apologize, and it is a monthly intercept beginning in April of 2014. And the amount goes from just over $5,000 up to $53.50 by the end of the loan.
Okay.
Move to approve.
And I'll second, but Mr. Cordova, I just want to make sure that it had been retired before and now we're reenacting it or repledging it?
Yes.
Okay. Just want to make sure that it had been totally paid out and.
The previous loan was retired in May. I was already here, so it happened in May, and we paid it off. Mr. Martinez was looking to replace these vehicles right away. I kind of held him off, asked him if we could wait for a while so we could bank that money to help out their fund balance for a while.
Thank you.
Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item F. This is the transcript of proceedings. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, the transcript of proceedings is basically a timeline, beginning with today's adoption of the resolution and ending on March 7th with the final closing of the loan. At that time, we'll have access to the funds.
So move for approval.
Is there a second? I'll go ahead. Okay. Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Okay. Item G. This is pledge of revenue certificate. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, the pledge revenue certificate just pledges the environmental GRT of the county for this loan.
Okay.
They'll move for approval.
I'll second. Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Item H. Information return for tax-exempt governmental obligations form. Mr. Cordova?
Mr. Chairman, this form is basically for the IRS. It's just a tax form that the county will submit for our tax-exempt status.
Move for approval?
Second.
Any other discussion? If not, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
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 Yes. Yes.
Yes. Commissioners, it's now noon. Did you want to proceed, or did you want a break for lunch?
Want to have a break for lunch?
Okay. For the record, Commissioners, I will not return back this afternoon. I have a New Mexico Association of Counties Board meeting that starts at 2:30 in Santa Fe, and that'll take the rest of the day off, or for me.
From here, Commissioner, you'll be working over there.
I will be working in Santa Fe.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, also, if I could add that the majority of staff will also be traveling down, or department heads, to Santa Fe, because some of them have some classes that they need to attend. And so if we could move it along as much as possible or take a short lunch in that aspect, just because, again, we've paid for these classes and staff need to get down there to do that.
Okay. Commissioner Sanchez, you had some comments?
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, yes, I'll be taking over once he leaves, so.
Very good.
Thank you for mentioning that manager, that we have some staff that need to go and get those classes done, as you just stated. Already paid for them, so we can't lose them. Thank you.
Is there a motion to break for a short lunch?
I think Commissioner Duran already made the motion.
Okay, is there a second?
I'll second.
Okay, Madam Clerk?
Yes?
Yes?
Yes.
Yes. Yes.
Yes. Thank you, everyone.
You ready?
Ready, Commissioner.
Do we have a motion to come back into session?
So move.
Second.
Third, fourth.
Call for the vote.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, no? It's all right.
Okay. A resolution requesting to adjust FY 2014 final budget to account for increase in revenues and expenditures for the DWI grant fund according to grant agreement, amendment number 114-D-J-30.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this DFA resolution is to account for an increase in the grant agreement for DWI. They received an additional $21,91. And so we're adjusting their revenues by that amount, and we're also increasing their expenditures, the money specifically meant for payroll. And so it'll go directly to the salary of a support staff at the DWI. And I stand for any questions.
Then we'll to approve.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion to approve, second. Clerk, did we have a motion? I mean, a call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Okay. Okay, we'll go down to DFA resolution number 28, FY 2013/2014. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director, a resolution requesting to adjust FY 2014 final budget to increase budgeted transfer and additional $350 from lodgers' tax non-promotional fund to rural utility debt service fund.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, this DFA resolution is basically some cleanup. We were short by $350, the amount of money that we would transfer from one fund to the other, and so the treasurer asked us to do this resolution to do the exact amount. The amount that we budgeted was $105,000, and it should have been $105,350. I stand for any questions.
I'll second. Have a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes. Okay, we'll move down to 9D. DFA resolution number 29, 2013/2014 FY, Leandro Cordova, Finance Director, a resolution requesting to transfer temporary cash from the general fund to the NMLA 4H Arena, addition pursuant to grant 12-LG-1493 fund upon the grant. Closeout, the temporary loan will be transferred back to general fund.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, I believe right at the end of the last budget year, Ms. Anita Padilla came to seek approval of creating the budget for this grant. However, at the time, we didn't give her any money to work with. So at this time, she's requesting a $25,000 temporary loan. The total award was $85,000, but she fills with the 25 she can get started and be able to start receiving reimbursement to continue to expend the entire amount.
So move for approval.
Okay.
Okay, we got a motion and a second. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 We'll go to 9E. Budget Adjustment, Animal Control. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director.
Mr. Chairman Commissioners, the next few budget adjustments came about from our mid-year review and going over things with the manager. We found a few very obvious things that we needed to adjust. So this first budget adjustment is for animal control. that we needed to adjust. So this first budget adjustment is for animal control. Animal control has had a lot of issues with their vehicles, and they've been using a lot of their maintenance budget, so we're proposing to increase their maintenance of vehicles by $2,000, and we're taking that out of their spay and neutering line item. I stand for any questions?
Have a second?
Second?
Okay, got a motion, second. Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Yes, I should ask this question while we're under discussion. Does that mean that money that we would generally fund stray hearts and that for that mobile veteran, veterinarian that comes and does spay and neutering, is that money being spent out of there?
I do believe so, but I believe that the sheriff felt he had some savings based on the timing and the number of clinics that he's had so far, and he felt that, I guess, they missed the clinic or something along those. You're right, it's on that same track. I'm not exactly sure how he intended to allocate all of that money, but I do believe it comes from that fund.
Okay.
And he felt he had vacancy savings.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioner Brony, that's correct, and that's part of the vacancies, the savings that was in there that we transferred over, so. And we have, we have talked with Ms. Wardlow and them about that, so they're well aware that we're going to transfer that. Oh, no.
That's something that we've always helped fund in the past, and I just don't want to do that.
And it's only a portion, it's not all of it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chairman. Okay, 9F. Budget Adjustment Solid Waste Operation. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the solid waste department is proposing to move some money into their temporary positions, and they're proposing to take it out of the maintenance of vehicles. The, we feel that with the new vehicles coming online, they won't need to expend as much of that maintenance of vehicles, and they do need to correct a deficiency they had in the temporary position, so that's just to clean up their budget. And I stand for any questions.
Someone to approve?
Have a second? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, 9G. Budget Adjustment Public Works. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director. Leandro?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the budget adjustment for Public Works is, we will be increasing their maintenance of grounds and roadways by $1,100. We're taking it out of roadways, bridges, culverts. The purpose of the adjustment is to pay for a gas line that they had to repair. They had a damaged gas line they had to repair, and this is to make that payment.
Where was that gas line damaged, Mr.?
I, I'm not exactly sure of the location. I do believe the incident happened back in the fall, sometime I want to say October or so, and at this time, we're just taking care of the bill.
How much?
1,100.
Someone to approve?
Have a second?
I'll second it.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 We'll go back now to 9H. Budget Adjustment Law Enforcement Protection Fund. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, the Law Enforcement Protection Fund is the fund that the sheriff uses to purchase things like his video cameras, the taser guns, and then he has a line item for vehicles. We're doing the adjustment today because he had expended money on equipment and machinery which exceeded the budget by $1,606. We're taking the money out of vehicles because that's the only unexpended line item at this time, so he can cover the purchases that have already been made. I stand for any questions on that.
Any questions, Commissioners?
Have a motion?
Was this money that was grant money, or?
Yes, this is the grant money, and I believe you've approved purchases for the sheriff and for their tasers, their cameras, and there was holsters, things like along those lines that you've approved, and they just happened overspend that line item.
Have a motion?
Some move?
I'll go ahead and second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 9I. Budget Adjustment ADC/JDC. Leandro Cordova, Finance Director?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this is probably the biggest adjustment of the day. As you know, we had made a lot of changes at the detention center, and we were waiting for this mid-year review to move some of that money around in order to cover some holes that they had from previous year expenditures and things of that nature. We identified the majority of the savings in their budget at the juvenile side in their full-time positions. Most of that was based on taking the director and her assistant and moving them over to the adult side. So we were able to experience vacancy savings there. We're taking that money and we're going to move it into multiple line items. They need to increase their supply budget by 10,000, their uniform linen by 10,000, transportation expense will go up by 900, non-capital furniture fixture and equipment by 500, and then their temporary positions in both ADC and JDC will be increased. They're going to increase the ADC temporary by 75,000 and the JDC by 25,000. I'm sorry, the other way around. The juvenile will go up by 75 and the adult will go up by 25. And part of why they do that is that with so much turnover over there, it's easier to hire new hires as temps. It gives both the new hire and the administrators the ability to see if that's going to work out, and it saves the county a lot of money in benefits and health insurance and all the other. So we tend to start off everybody as a temp and then move them into full-time if it works out.
Now, Mr. Cordova, how is this going to be affected with the new healthcare? You know, are temps going to be required to pay healthcare on? So is that something that's going to go away for us?
Unfortunately, we don't have an exact answer to that, but yes, we do anticipate it's going to affect us. We just don't know exactly how much it will affect us. So we are keeping that in mind, but even at that, it still seems to be the practice of the director to do this temporary hire first. But yeah, we are looking at that, and it will add, and as soon as I get a number, I'll let you know. I'm a little worried about it myself.
Some move to approve?
No, I was, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
So what are we looking like this year as opposed to last year for the overall detention center budget? How's that running?
Good question, Commissioner Blankenhorn. Overall, we're actually right on line. We had deficiencies in certain line items based on last year bills that weren't paid until this fiscal year, but because I believe, in my opinion, the reorganization has created the savings that we needed to cover that hole, and at this point, we seem to be on track.
Right.
So we're monitoring it every month still. We have a lot of meetings with the administrators over there, and we're looking at what they need, and they have a very good idea at this point, what they need on a month-to-month, so our expenses have leveled out, so to speak. We're not ebbs and flows.
Thank you.
We got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, Commissioner, go back to 9J. Indigent Fund Claims. Tammy Harameo, Fund Coordinator. She's out today, but I believe Leandro is going to speak on her behalf. Request for approval of indigent fund hospital claims?
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, yes, I'm presenting this on behalf of Ms. Harameo. Today, we're requesting an amount of $35,737.93 in sole community provider for Holy Cross Hospital. It should be noted that this is all for 2013, as this program has ended. Anything you see going forward, we'll be covering backlog of the 2013, and I stand for any questions.
Questions? Have a motion? Second?
Second?
You have a motion and a second? Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Okay, we move on to 9K. Indigent Fund Claims. Tammy Harameo, Indigent Fund Coordinator, and Leonardo, Leandro will be speaking on her behalf.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, this request is for the approval of EMS ambulance claims. The amount of the request is $645.72.
Question?
To approve?
Got a motion?
Second?
Second?
Call for the vote?
Yes.
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 Thank you, Leandro.
Thank you.
We now move to 12. County Managers Report and Matters Discussions Considerations Decisions Regarding the Following. A. Discussion Regarding the Transfer of Taos County Housing Department to HUD.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not sure if we want to do the Commissioners' report prior to mine?
I'm sorry.
There was a change in-
Move up the Commissioners?
Right, we have added the Commissioners' report on there at the beginning of the-
Okay.
And I did have an item. I don't know, Commissioner had an item also, Commissioner Blankenhorn. Commissioners, and what I would request is, you know, here, the Association of Counties, in the last year, they had the Colorado Association of Counties sponsored, they sponsored a joint meeting at the winter legislative season and brought Colorado and New Mexico together, and I think it was a good effort, you know, especially because we border that, and this season, you know, it wasn't really discussed, and there's a lot of things that are happening, especially with that piece of land that encompasses both states. I think it's something, and pilt is another thing that we could discuss, public lands, you know, like the, what is the name of the, of the?
NFL grants, is that what you're talking about?
Excuse me?
The NFL grants?
No, not the NFL grant, the new designation of-
Oh.
The Rio Grande de Norte, I think that encompasses both New Mexico and Colorado, and I think it's something, you know, the mineral extraction, grazing, hunting wildfires, and the drought issues that are going to be coming up, and I really, you know, the collaboration between the, you know, the state of, the northern part of our state and the southern part of their state, I think is something that we need to collaborate on, you know, and I think if we could sponsor that here sometime in February, I think it would be, I think it would benefit everybody, just to kind of know what's going on and have that collaboration amongst the two entities. I think it's, just pass out a little, something that kind of outlines it and kind of for everybody, so that every kind of idea of what we're looking at, and hopefully, it's something that we can, that we can do and invite them here.
So then, Commissioner, oh, Mr. Chairman, what you're suggesting is that we have a meeting sometime February next?
Yes, reaching out to the southern end of Colorado and, you know.
And Commissioners, may I add to that? I met with the Commissioners from San Luis last week, and I talked to the manager, and he supported me on this, and we have a meeting set up for January, yeah, January the 28th, correct, for our next meeting, and we will have the three Commissioners from San Luis come on board with us, and they would, we were going to have them on this time, but being that we didn't, the manager brought up a good point, is to have them drive an hour and a half down here, and only give them like 10 minutes, 15 minutes, wouldn't have been a good idea, so he thought by having them on January the 28th at our meeting, special meeting, that we can give them at least an hour, so they can, so we can talk and discuss issues that they have and something that we could be a good neighbor with those folks. And thank you, Commissioner Brony, that's a great idea, and I think we're on the same page, you know, so.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, if, if, I don't, I'm not sure if we have other entities or possibly other Commissioners that you would like to recommend that we reach out to. I know that we have Archuleta County and some of the other counties sort of bordering us, so I'd be willing to do that.
That's what I'm looking for, is, you know, make it a little, you know-
Broader.
Broader than just San Luis.
Let me, let me go ahead and find out who those Commissioners are from that area. We had initially scheduled it for today. Again, I had talked to Commissioner Sanchez about that because the issue was I just didn't want them to drive all this way and then let's just have 10 minutes. We had thought about having the first hour, hour and a half of the special meeting on the 28th, if that comes to fruition, to do that, and then do the 911 after, and I'll report a little bit of the 911 as Commissioner Blankenhorn wanted me to do that. So let me, let me work on that. We'll have staff work on that, and then we'll, we'll invite them down, and we'll have a special meeting just to discuss that and talk about those issues, and then anything that needs to come in front of the Commission, we can bring it at the next Commission meeting for decision or discussion items, if we need to.
A date, if we, you know.
Yes, sir, I'll get, I'll get that.
All right.
Thank you, Commissioner. So then, was there any more on the Commissioners' report?
I think Commissioner Blankenhorn also had something.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, last Friday, we had the Regional Coalition of Lantal here. It was a good meeting. Thanks very much to staff for setting everything up. We had a nice table of food over there. It was a full house. We had the mayor of Santa Fe, mayor of Espanola, representatives from Los Alamos County, Danny Mayfield, Commissioner from Santa Fe, and everybody enjoyed the facility and being here, but the screens, we could never get the screens to work, and for the overhead, they just kept flashing on and off, and called Conrad, and he came down, looked around, and left, and then, you know, a couple of the microphones were buzzing, and we called Conrad, and he came down, looked around, and left, and we never really did get it fixed, and not to complain about the past, but just looking forward, if we can, see if we can analyze what went on there, and so it doesn't happen again. It was a little embarrassing, but everybody got over it.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, I apologize for that. We are in the process of actually hiring another IT person to help us with that, and unfortunately, Conrad is really our expert on it at this point. The other IT person that we have on board is more of a webmaster, so he deals more with the web issues and the iPads, but we are hiring another individual to come on board and help us with that. We, and I apologize for that. We will have him here next time for that.
Just talk to Conrad about it and see if he thinks that there's a fix to prevent it in the future.
Will do.
Thank you.
Okay, we go to 12A. County Managers Report and Matters Discussions Considerations Decisions Regarding the Following. Discussion Regarding the Transfer of the Taos County Housing Department to HUD.
Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, and Mr. Malone, we can actually jump in on this one if he wants to. Mr. Bellis isn't here right now, but we did have a meeting last week with the HUD officials, and people from the North Region were also present. Mr. Malone, myself, Mr. Cordova was also with us here, and he can jump in also, and Mr. Bellis drove to Santa Fe to meet with them. Basically, the discussion was around the contract, some of the issues that we had around the contract, and trying to keep Taos County out of liability moving forward with the Eighth Northern Regions, or the Northern Region, I'm sorry, housing development actually taking over. We have committed, one, Taos County, to this endeavor, and second of all, we've also committed that within the next two weeks, we would actually put a boilerplate contract in front with them that we've used in the past with Eastern, and so we're going to be working on that, sending it down to them. We've also committed that, to make sure that we're at any meetings that they want us to be at, and that we move this endeavor forward. It's my understanding from the meetings and everything that's been going on and telephone conversations, that, you know, there's going to be a transition period where there's going to be an RFP process that's going to go through the Northern Region, and eventually, we're going to start transferring some of those assets and some of the monies and all those things to Northern Region with the intent of fully transferring over everything to them by July 1st, and if you guys can correct me if I'm wrong, that's sort of the focus that we're wanting to move forward with that. There's a lot of things that have to go into place prior to us doing that, and so there has to be some contracts that are negotiated and talked about. There's got to be an RFP process that needs to happen, and then they actually have to choose a vendor that's going to come in and manage, manage this style. Taos County will continue to support the housing project from our finance office, from our Public Works office, also from our facilities management perspective until that full transition comes into place. Throughout these negotiations and throughout this process, we'll also see, you know, how much, or how, what big part of the transition do they want to take over. They may come back to Taos County and say, we'd like to keep the finances with Taos County. Would you guys consider doing that for an administrative fee, or no, we're going to hire somebody else and bring it all on board from the Public Works, same thing, or from our facilities management, the same thing. And so this will be a negotiation period throughout that timeframe, and I'm not sure if Mr. Malone or Mr. Cordova would like to add a- if Mr. Malone or Mr. Cordova would like to add a little bit to that, maybe Bob, from the legal side of the House?
Mr. Vice Chair, basically, between now and a complete transfer, at which point, and July 1st is the, is the correct goal for that transfer, so that it corresponds to the fiscal year, but at that point, in July, the contractual agreement with HUD would transfer from Taos County to the Northern Regional Housing Authority, which is a housing authority set up by the State of New Mexico under legislation. Between now and then, that is what Steve is talking about, that the idea is that Northern Regional Housing Authority will take on some functions, and those need to be the subject of contractual agreements.
We stand for any questions from the Commission.
And Mr. Archuleta, and Mr. Malone, Mr. Cordova, Vice Chair, there is a House Bill 11 and a, and, well, Senate Bill 11 and House Bill 29, that this basically kind of hinges on, there's some monies that is being sought for the oversight of the regional housing authorities, not just this, the Northern Regional Housing Authority, but the other, I think there's three of them now, and there's some, there's a House Bill, Senate Bill 11 and House Bill 29, that Commissioner Sanchez, Vice Chair, that you might really be, you might want to help us with, with the Senator. I know that Mary Kay Papin is carrying or is introducing this bill, and it's Senate Bill 11, and basically it's setting aside some monies for the oversight of this North, this regional housing authorities, getting it set up so there's some money appropriated, and giving the authority to the finance authority. So that's on both sides, so we're going to need help getting these passed, so it's something you, you might put on our radar for our, our person that he can help us track on.
Mr. Bruni, is, is, that's Senate Bill 11 and...
House Bill 29.
Senator's side?
And House Bill 29.
Okay.
And Representative Gonzalez is carrying it on that side.
Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner, Commissioner Bruni, we will give this to Mr. Apodaca, make sure that he's tracking this for us, and then staff will make themselves available to add any data or any testimony that we need to for this bill. I know Mr. Bellis carries a lot of information on that, so we'll, we'll follow that and track it through, and report back to the Commission at the next Commission meeting as to how that's going.
Mr. Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
So if the Northern Regional takes over the contract with HUD, then the administrative of the, our housing stock will work from Santa Fe, basically? Will that be the offices?
No, sir. Mr. Vice Chair, Commissioner Blankenhorn, actually, the offices will be here in Taos, the actual center of it, which will be awesome for Taos County, because it really helps with economic development. All those jobs will come here from the northern sector of Taos County, or, I'm sorry, the northern sector of New Mexico, will come to Taos County, and this will be the hub for all the housing departments across the Northern Region.
That's great, I knew that that had been our intention, I didn't know if we had been successful in that. Where would their offices be?
Their offices right now would be where the housing department is at this point, but if they need to expand or make that bigger, then they would look at other properties and places in order to have that. But it would be a great economic boost for Taos County, it'll also include more jobs and also contract, jobs for contractors for fixing up of the housing and those kind of things that could come out of this community.
Good job, good luck on finalizing the contract.
Okay, so we move on?
Just for, yes, if you want me to go on to the second one? Well, I know Commissioner Blankenhorn, you wanted to report on 911, I also wanted to let the Commission know just briefly, and we didn't get it on the agenda because it happened on Friday, we actually met with the people from North Central, and this was referenced, the Ancianos program. Staff is working on that, and will present that to the Commission at the next Commission meeting with our recommendations for the Ancianos program, but that is something else that we're working on, we're putting all the numbers and everything together, and we'll have that in front of the Commission on the January and the February meeting. So on the 911, Commissioner Blankenhorn had requested that I give an update as to what's going on there. Letters that the Commission had approved for the 911 were sent out via certified mail on January 8th, 2014, with return receipts on all of those. The Town of Taos signed their return receipt and delivered it back to us on January 9th. Taos Pueblo was signed and delivered on January 10th. The Village of Cuesta was signed and delivered on January 15th, and Tauski Valley was delivered on January 13th. Currently, only the electronic verification from the Postal Service has come back to us, but all the entities have received those. We have asked staff to call all the stakeholders in that this week, to talk to them, to see if they're interested in having a meeting on the 28th, so the special meeting would be contingent on all of these individual entities actually calling back and getting back with us on that. So we'll be making those phone calls this week and talking to all of that. Staff is in the process, well, we just talked about that. The Town of Taos Stakeholders Meeting is scheduled for January 30th, 2014. We have RSVP'd for that, and we also will continue to push forward and provide information as to how the county's continuing to push forward with the 911 system. There have been visits by multiple agencies, United States Forest Service, State Forestry, BLM, Carson National Forest, Taos Office, they attended last week at a meeting and a tour of our facility, the response is very, very positive. The only thing that I have to report back that, you know, is a little bit negative in that, is that these contractors aren't wanting to come over until after the fire season, we're so close to that part of the year. Because of the extreme drought and everything that's going on, they're really gearing up where they're currently at, to make sure that they're ready and prepared for a fire season. I think if we continue to move forward in that, that they'd be willing to look at that and come over in the fall of next year, but at this point, they're saying that they're just going to hold tight because they feel that we're going to have, one, an early fire season, and two, because of the extreme drought, probably a pretty extensive fire season, unfortunately, for this community. Do you have any questions about that?
Is that the Forest Service?
That's Forest Service and BLM, I believe, right?
Both?
Yeah.
Both, both felt the same way, that they couldn't consider it until after the fire season in the fall.
Right now, they're just wanting to gear up for the fire season, and so they have to have all of those things in place, their command center and everything ready to go. Again, if you look outside today, we're expecting hopefully some snow on Thursday, but if we don't get that, you know, we could fall into an extreme fire season, probably within the next three weeks, if we get no snow or no rain within this community. The forests are drying up fairly quickly, the snowpack is almost non-existent out there, and so they're, at this point, their only option is to gear up right now and get ready for that fire season, because they do think it's going to be an extensive fire season, unfortunately.
Were there any discussions about what an agreement might look like with those entities in Taos County?
I'll let Richard address that.
Commissioners, basically, speaking with Buck and the other officials from BLM, Forest Service, like, like the manager said, they were very positive about the facility and everything, but also along with the fire season, they are currently in an I-DOT plan where the federal government is thinking about combining Santa Fe and Taos into one region, and, and that would necessitate Taos staff moving to Santa Fe, being relocated to Santa Fe. Whether that happens or not, it's part of their long-range plan, there hasn't been a decision made as to that happening, and that's one of the reasons the Taos offices are looking at places to be able to relocate, to present to that, to the next people in the chain of command, to try and keep the staff and operations here. They feel that it would just benefit any kind of incident when there, if there's people here on-site, not running an incident from Santa Fe. So there's a lot of, a lot of bureaucracy and everything, but they were very positive, they liked the space, the ADA compliant, they even talked about asking for more space, and I said, "That's something that would have to be discussed with the Commission" and, and to move that forward, but they did like the space.
Any, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead, go ahead.
Any idea when the regionalization decision will be made? Because they're only going to want to move once, right?
Yeah, I mean, I think it's, it's going to be based on budget. Right now, in Santa Fe, there isn't a building large enough to house both Santa Fe and the Carson District. If they were to regionalize it, they would have to put out proposals either for design and construction, or purchasing, or moving, renting space. That, I would think, in my opinion, is probably five to 10 years down the road, I mean, to do a large structure is, is a year in planning and a year in construction, and they haven't even designated if they need to come, if they're going to combine them, they haven't, it's all part of their study and decision-making. If they're going to combine them, if they're going to build a new, a new structure, do they have someplace in Santa Fe to build the structure? So it's, I believe it's at least five, more likely 10 years down the road before they would combine, but it is something that they're looking at, and this is part of the decision-making process.
Vice Chair?
Go ahead.
I did attend that meeting with the, with the Forest Service, BLM, I think BIA was there too, or not?
Yes, I think so.
BIA was there, I believe, too. It was very, very positive, I mean, you know, we talked about, you know, we really need to step up to the plate to try to protect those jobs that could possibly leave our community, I thought it was important for us to be there, and, and I did, to, to try to protect that, and it was very, very positive, they really liked the building, they, they liked the opportunity that we're giving them, they, they talked like that, you know, here, that they would try to push up the issue, because they didn't see any other facility in the areas that they were viewing that, that, that met the qualifications like ours did. So, you know, I know they, they, they were looking at a bigger portion of that, of the facility, than we thought they were going to need, but I think it would still work within our plan, and I think it's, it's something that's going to play out here. You know, I know that the Forest Service supervisor said he didn't want to get in the middle of a battle between the, the town and the county, but they really liked our facility.
Any more discussion, Commissioners? Richard, go ahead.
Do you have a question, Commissioner?
No.
Last week also, our contractor, Vance Communications, was here to inspect the site and look at the location for the tower and preliminary scope, the electrical needs and requirements, everything looks real good, I believe, and they believe that there shouldn't be any changes, and they should all follow, if there's a little bit of changes in wiring and, and locations because of the move from, and originally, they looked at the Lovato Place Building, shouldn't go over the $105,000, and they will get us a solid, even though the contract's already been signed, they will get us a solid number revision before they start work, and, and we get our geo-testing, they asked if I could get them an electronic copy of the soils testing that was performed here for this complex, so that they have an idea, and they will be doing soils testing on their own to do the design work for the tower. But they're, they're ready to go as soon as, as we give them the go-ahead.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, the last thing, just that I wanted to report to the Commission on the 911, is that tomorrow morning at 11:00 AM, myself, the Finance Director, and I think the Attorney will be going, and also our lobbyist will be with us, we are going to be meeting with DFA. This is our second round of meetings with DFA to discuss the 911. We had done an initial presentation to them about a month ago, and this is a follow-up after they came down to Taos and visited the Gustorff site and had talked to the Town of Taos. So we are meeting with them at 11 o'clock tomorrow at DFA to discuss that further.
And Mr. Archuleta, they did review the site?
I do not believe that they have seen this site, no, I don't, I don't think so. We did invite them that day, I don't think that they had enough time to come, we will invite them again to come up and, and see the site. I know that Art Reels, when he was here the first time, he actually viewed the complex and saw some of the complex, but it was an overall view of the complex that we gave him, we didn't specifically take him up there to look at that, just for the 911 portion. And any Commissioner that'd like to attend, I think Commissioner Sanchez, the Vice Chair said that he wanted to attend with us tomorrow, if there's any other Commissioner, 11 o'clock.
I'd like to, too, I don't know if that's going to be a problem.
It would be a conflict if we have three, so if we could get, just decide on two Commissioners to attend, be more than happy. We'll, we'll meet at the Eldorado downstairs prior to going, walking over to DFA.
Okay.
Tomorrow morning, we can decide at that point. Any other questions on the 911? Thank you.
Can we move on to 12B? Election of a member of the Holy Cross Hospital Board of Trustees. Is that a member of the Commission, or?
Yeah. Mr. Vice Chairman, I was on that committee last year, and if no one objects, I'd like to do it again this year. I'm sitting on the committee, the hospital committee that was formed by the town and the county and various other entities, have been attending those with Leandro every other Wednesday night, we're getting some good information about the finances and the trajectories that the hospital's looking at. We're going to come up with a report to bring back to this Commission, along with some recommendations. And so I'm learning a lot about the hospital, I'm making some connections, and I'd like to keep that going by, by being a member of the committee to elect three new board members.
And Commissioners, if...
Hold on, discussion, to elect afterwards, what, to elect three?
Yeah, that's what this, this item's about, there are three board members who are currently up, whose terms are currently up. One is Ana Martinez from El Prado, she's been on the board for 24 years, another is Charlie Gonzalez from Cuesta, and the third is Gus Cordova. And they will be taking applications from a variety of other people, and to the best of my knowledge, each of them is also still wanting to be on the board. So there may not, there may be a change, there may not be a change, and it is a very trying time for that board, the board has to come up with new ideas about what portions of the hospital they need to protect, what portions they may be able to change, and there's going to be some very difficult decisions going forward, so I think it's, it's going to be important to choose those board members.
And you, you being where you're at now, you will review the application?
Well, where I'm at, where I'm at now is the committee, but, but we need to select one of us to be on this separate committee that's going to determine who the new board members are going to be in May. So this board chose me to be the representative of the committee that's looking at all of the operations, but the item that's currently on the agenda is for a member to be on the committee to choose new board members.
But you said on that last time, too.
I did, I said on that last year also.
Both, oh.
So move to nominate Mr. Blankenhorn to serve on that committee.
And discussion, I'd like to compliment you, Commissioner Blankenhorn, and Leandro, I know we've got a good, good team with both of you on board. Any more discussion on that?
Been great having Leandro there.
Don't go sell us down the river there.
But I also, I also think, Commissioners, that it's important that if you guys know of anybody who would like to be on this board, or who you would recommend to be on this board, that you let Commissioner Blankenhorn know, so because he'll be part of the nominating committee that'll recommend these individuals to, to the board, so I think that's also important, and you could get with him at a later date to, to do that, but fairly quickly.
Commissioner, we got a motion, a second, call for the vote?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay, we'll move on now to item 12C. Discussion on a possible new rate of $75 for the housing of Town of Taos inmates at the Adult Detention Center.
Ms. Chairman, Commissioners, actually, I just want to have some discussion on this, just to make sure that that's where we're moving forward. We're running all the numbers at this point, and one of the biggest numbers that came out in, in, in running these, is that basically there was about 286 days that Taos County over the last year has not been able to bill the Town of Taos for inmates being in here, and because of that, we're asking to go back and take a look at the actual contract that was written, to see where it actually states in the contract, or if that was something that came in front of the Commission, and the Commission eventually approved that, and not necessarily part of the contract, and that's part of what we're finding at this point. The 286 days, or 2,086 days, or whatever the amount was, comes from them coming in on Friday evening after 8 o'clock, of course, that's after work, and that's after, you know, everything has sort of started up for the weekend, but then... know, everything has sort of started up for the weekend, but then being pulled out on Monday morning. And so, we compare that to the billing that we actually were able to bill the Town of Taos, and it's overwhelmingly a lot more money that we could draw into our detention center. I know that the Finance Director this morning and throughout our mid-year review, you know, we're not pumping in as much money from our general fund into the detention center as we have in the past. I think we've made some good strategic changes there. I think the operation's running a little bit smoother and a little bit better, but we really need to start looking at these contracts and what was agreed by the Commission previously. And what we're finding is that we're actually leaking, or we're bleeding, as the Finance Director always says, we're bleeding in different areas, and we want to stop the bleeding from happening and, you know, try to plug up those holes as much as we can. So, you will see it on the agenda for the next meeting. I'll also have the Director here, who's actually on her way down to the NMAC conference, to report those actual numbers that we have. But we're trying to narrow it as much as we can so we can do a good proposal to the Commission. If the Commission chooses not to go in that direction and keep it at $100 bucks a day, that's okay, but we still need to relook at the contract and possibly revisit the contract in the future because, again, there's a lot of bleeding that's going on there, and it's, when I saw the numbers, it was amazing to me, was 20 times the amount of money that we're actually charging, unfortunately.
I don't believe that that contract ever came before the Commission, you know, because I would have objected to that right away, you know what I mean? I ain't, whoever did that was probably the county manager, and he did it on his own, you know? Because, you know, you know, we got a facility we got to pay for, you know? I'd have been up in arms, you know what I mean?
We're trying, we're trying to track.
Can you find that?
We're trying to track all that down and relook at the contracts. Like I said initially, when, at the first look at the contract, we didn't see that in there, so then we were thinking that we're going to have to go back to the Commission meetings when we first started the negotiation process to see if that, how that was negotiated or where that went into place. But that's something that's been in existence in Taos County since the opening and the start of the detention center, and like I said, it's substantial. It's a substantial amount of money that we're basically bleeding out there and, you know, paying for the care of them. We've also asked the Director to work with our contract provider on the services that people provide over there, and so what we're going to do for the Commission is give you three examples, an individual who comes in with no medical needs, an individual who comes in with routine medical needs like diabetes, those kind of things, and then an individual that comes in with high medical needs that we have here. We've had individuals without arms, we've had individuals with head trauma, some of those, and so that we can actually give you an expense of how those are working. We're trying to assess all of that, and so we're working with Ms. Torres to get those numbers for us. But the one that stood out for me immediately was, like I said, the days that we were not able to bill the Town of Taos for the time that the inmates had spent in there, and it was amazing how many days those were right off the bat. So, we're continuing to analyze and look at that.
Go ahead, Mr.?
Thank you, Vice Chair. When does the contract with the town expire?
Well, I couldn't tell you off the top of my head, but I'll, we'll get back with you on that.
But I mean, it looks like to you that even if we went down to 75, but we charge for the weekends, that we'd be positive?
We'd be probably 10 to 15 times more positive than we are right now on that, quite honestly. Because what's happening is they're coming in, they're spending three, four days.
Right.
And then they're being pulled out and sent down to San Miguel, and so we have no billing throughout that timeframe, that they're spending those three, four days. And you compound that every day that that's happening over there 365 days a year, and it becomes a lot of, a lot of hours, a lot of days that are there. And again, off the top of my head, I think it was like 2,000 days or something like that that we weren't able to bill for, which was out there.
And the town has made the proposal to us to make that adjustment. If we drop down to 75, make the adjustment so that we charge them for the weekends, which is always the time they're in here.
It's a negotiation that the chief said that he would be willing to take to the council as a negotiation tool because his officers spend a lot of time and energy on travel between here and San Miguel. So, if we could come down to that price, we can charge, because they're going to get charged in San Miguel if they're down there, and we could collect those monies here. And so, we'll put some comparisons for you at $75 and at $100 and what the difference would be in that aspect.
In addition to getting compensated for the prisoners who actually spend the weekend here, we would get more business that is otherwise going to San Juan theoretically.
Correct.
Sounds good. Good luck.
Yes, sir. Would you like to come up?
Oh, Mr. Chairman, before you leave, and can you find out how many days it was?
I will.
And how much we lost?
Yes, I will.
Very generous.
Stevens Hall, I agree with the idea that obviously, they pay for the nights that they're there. You know, you don't get weekends free, but in terms of reducing the rate, I don't, it seems to me that even at a premium, this is a deal to stay here. I mean, here's a map of the counties, so to San Miguel, it's got to be half a day down there and back for every trip, a minimum, I would say, if not longer. Think of the salaries, at what, $25, $30, $40 an hour? I don't know what the, $100 for four hours, and that's one person. If they got to send two with two inmates, that's $200 in gas and wear and tear. How could they ask for less when just by coming here, they're going to spend less? The town is always on everybody about hard times and spending, da-da, da-da, da-da. This is, a simple way is for them simply to come here and pay the going rate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
I mean, just us or somebody coming here with certain problems, just say to the county, to the town, "Well, look, it's costing you $400 a day," or whatever, I mean, approximately.
Thank you, sir.
We stand for any more questions? Thank you.
Okay, with that said, I have a motion for adjournment.
So, move.
Second. All second.
All for the vote?
Yes. Yes.
Yes.
Yes. Thank you, Commissioners.